Can we get a roll call? Commissioner Andretti?
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Here.
Commissioner Pratt?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
Chair Hernandez?
Here.
And can we get an approval of the Planning Commission minutes of February 3, 2016? You've had to find a review them.
Move for approval?
Second.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed abstention, motion carries. So, we've reached the public comment period. Each member of the audience may address a commission on any subject within the commissioner's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to the discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. So, for any items not on the agenda. No? Okay, we'll move on to item number one.
Yes, this is a request for a tentative parcel map at 1586 Black Road. This went to study session and there were a handful of issues talked about that the applicant and staff are continuing to work on. And so, we are requesting a continuance to a future date. There is no specific date, so it will be taken off the calendar and re-noticed. And the applicant is present.
Is there a comment by the applicant?
I'm here, no comment.
No comment, okay, thank you. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission continue tentative parcel map TR 5986-001 to a future hearing date.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed abstention, motion carries. Moving on to item number two.
Following the same line of recommendations, this is a monetary by Verizon at Blosser and Battles. And they have been in negotiation with staff about the options for a microcell approach instead of a monetary. This originally went to the Planning Commission in September. It was continued to a date earlier in the year and it was subsequently moved again. The applicant has agreed to move it to April 6th as there's still work being done on the microcell option. So, staff is recommending a continuance at this time.
Is the applicant here?
I don't believe the applicant is here.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll move that we continue item number two, the plan development permit for Verizon to the April 6, 2016 hearing date.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed abstention, motion carries. Item number three. Staff?
Okay. Good evening commissioners. This will be staff's presentation on the Santa Maria Business Development Center. The business center is located at 731 South Lincoln Street. They're moving from their current location, which is on 429 East Main Street. They're known as M-I-Y-B spaces. Their business model is basically to help small businesses in the city by renting out office suites. So, whether they're an existing small business or new establishing small business. This site will allow them to expand, but also to have what they call a culinary incubator. And so, that involves the installation of a commercial kitchen, which would be used for cottage food operations and catering businesses. Just talking a little bit about this condition use permit and why it's being put in place, this kitchen, so technically this kitchen would be allowed in other zones, but not in this zone, which is CPO, Commercial and Professional Office. Now, the use for renting out office spaces would be allowed. And so, we see this as an ancillary use. It's expanding their business of helping small businesses. And so, we believe that this kitchen is in line with the intent and purposes of the zone. There is also going to be enhanced landscaping, drought tolerant, six new trees, a security gate, and a fence because of security concerns by the applicant. Some additional concerns that were brought by a member of the public, a nearby property owner, was that mail drop box service shouldn't be allowed, and also that no outdoor storage of cargo containers should be allowed outside of construction times. That concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions, and the applicant is also present.
Bring it back. Do you have any questions? Does the applicant wish to speak? State your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Anne Crimarosa. My address in Santa Maria is 429 East Main Street, which is where we operate our current operation of M-I-Y-B spaces. I'm very excited about our expansion and really converting M-I-Y-B spaces into the Santa Maria Business Development Center. It's going to give us a chance to make a greater difference, a greater impact on the entrepreneurial mindset within Santa Maria. Since we don't have a small business development center, we don't have a lot of support systems for small business. The incubator, the culinary incubator is not the only piece that we're adding by moving into a space that's twice as large as what we have. We're adding a technical assistance program, providing a lot of support for businesses that are launching, as well as businesses that are in existence that need support to grow, or maybe even to stabilize and be able to continue in business. We're also providing professional development training for those who are thinking about business, or if they're just even thinking about going to work in a business. So, we have a lot of training options that are available. In addition to that, we are going to have an incubator program for traditional business. The culinary incubator, yes, it will help serve us, serve the cottage food operations, as well as anybody who wants to enter into the food industry. But, the traditional incubator system will take want-to-be entrepreneurs through the process of actually doing the research, identifying a potential business, and the creation of their business plan, and really get them ready to be able to launch. And then, if they want to, they can become a member in spaces, have a place to actually do their business, maybe grow into one of the private offices, and eventually grow their wings and move on out into one of the many commercial spaces that we have available in Santa Maria. That's the goal. That's our goal, is to help businesses grow, launch, and thrive locally. So, if you have any questions about our project, I'm happy to take them.
Question from the commission?
Do you own the property?
We're buying the property, yes.
Thank you.
We close on Friday morning.
I have a question. On the kitchen space, that's, so it's a borrowed space? Like, the people come in, they mark on a calendar, "I'm going to be here at this certain time." They come in, do their business, do their baking, do their cooking, whatever, sell their product, then move out. The next person comes in?
It's exactly right. And at the present time, there's nothing locally within a great region, a distance, for entrepreneurs to be able to do that. In doing a Google search myself, the closest hourly-use commercial kitchen that I found was Galita and Paso Robles. And so, we're not talking a large kitchen, we're not talking like, you know, a restaurant-sized kitchen. We're talking, you know, maybe two ranges, an oven, and, you know, the things to clean up with. So, we're not talking a huge kitchen. This is something that meets health department requirements, has the accoutrements that they need to actually do what they need to prepare the foods, products, that whether they're doing a catering business, or if they're making food products that they're packaging and then turning around and selling to the public.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Question?
What hours would the kitchen be, what hours would you make available for people who wanted to use the kitchen?
The kitchen itself?
Yeah.
You know, at the present time, you know, I'd like to see it be operational Monday through Friday, nine to five. That's my goal, we fill up those hours, you know, I'm going to spend money on building it.
But it's a nine to five thing? You're not looking possibly at doing bakery items, which start at three or four in the morning, or something like that?
You know, at this point in time, I don't know what the demand will be. We do have, some of our members in the co-working space have what we call 24/7 access, but I've never seen anybody there past nine o'clock at night, or before seven in the morning. So, you know, it just depends on what they're doing. Just because they have 24/7 access doesn't mean that they're there. It just means that they're there after five o'clock, because we have staffing there from nine to five.
Question? Okay, I do have a question. What kind of traffic do you expect? Because you're going to be larger now, right?
Yes. You know, I, we haven't done a traffic projection. I do know it would be much easier to get in and out of our parking lot than it is off of Main Street. Take your life on your hands doing that. But, you know, we have 20, I don't know, 25, 26 members now, so, you know, we would have capacity to have, I don't know, 50 or 60. But there's never, it's like a gym, you know, not everybody's there at the same time. They come and go, some are there once a week, some are there every day. So, it's really difficult to really determine, to try and guesstimate how many people would be there at any one time. So, I'm sorry, I can't really give you a definite answer.
Thank you.
I have one other question, kind of tagging along on the previous question. Is there an upper limit to the number of people that you rent this space out to? Or if everything just went dandy and half the planet wanted to use your facility, that they could do so? Or is there a finite number?
I was speaking of the center in whole, or are we speaking specifically for the kitchen?
No, the facility is a whole. Moving more along the lines of the traffic pattern.
Right. Our, we don't really work on a rental basis. We work on a membership basis, very much like the gym does. And so, we don't determine a maximum number of members that we could have. You know, I don't know that we'll ever be able to sell enough that we would, you know, reach an overly big maximum number. I'd like to try that sometime, but, you know, I, like I said, I don't know that we would see, you know, we have a really big parking lot there. I can't imagine it being full unless we have a, you know, some kind of an event. I just can't imagine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Use written communications? Can I get a motion?
Could we go back? Could I look one more time at the letters you've received or the comments you've seen?
Do you have?
Okay.
So, these were the concerns. Just the mail drop box service and the outdoor storage of cargo containers.
Okay. Well, I will move that the Planning Commission by motion approve conditional use permit U 2016-001.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed abstentions, motion carries. Moving on to item number four. The Cuevas Warehouse Conditional Use Permit at 1020 West Chapel Street. Staff?
Okay, this is staff's presentation on Cuevas Warehouse.
I've got to recuse myself on this item.
Okay.
This is staff's presentation on Cuevas Warehouse, located at 1020 West Chapel Street. The project is, site is located at 1020 West Chapel. It's located in the CM, Commercial Manufacturing Zoning District. This project proposes to construct a 4,000-square-foot warehouse on a half-acre site with two legal non-conforming dwelling units. The applicant intends to relocate his business here. He is located nearby on Russell. He owns a ice cream and candy distribution business. So, technically, with this site plant, we are legalizing the homes because the warehouse is the allowed use in the Commercial Manufacturing District. And so, this works for us, and it also works for the applicant very well. We're getting new-
Just a quick, they are legal, but they're non-conforming. Isn't that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the applicant is also going to put in new landscaping and new trees on the street frontage. In addition to what you see here, two more of the parking spaces are being converted into landscape, making for more landscape. This is the side elevation. There's going to be some articulation with different colors of CMU block. Overall, staff recommends approval of this project. It legalizes the homes, and it brings enhanced landscape for the city, making for a better community and visual impact for the residents. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant? Would they like to speak?
I have a question for staff.
Okay, we have a question for staff.
Just from a historical perspective, can you comment on when the two residences became non-conforming, and why?
No, I don't know when it was rezoned. So, we don't know when it occurred, but when the zoning became CM, the housing is no longer, is not allowed in CM.
Okay.
But through the mixed-use ordinance, the CUP is going to make them allowed uses, so they'll be able to do repairs and even additions and such without having any type of limitations.
Right. There's just a lot going on on that street, so I was surprised that anything would be non-conforming. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. The 309, the warehouse they have at 309 North Russell, that's actually a couple blocks away. That's not the adjoining warehouse to the project site?
No, it is a couple blocks away, yes.
Additional questions?
It seems to be that most of this warehouse is going to be hidden from view?
Yes, yes it will.
So, that's why we're allowing the, just the plain concrete block with a little bit of, I'm assuming just a little bit different colors of concrete block?
Yes, we made sure it wouldn't be just one color.
It's not, yeah, it's not going to be very attractive if you could see the whole thing. Thank you.
Additional questions?
So, is it going to be basically hidden, then?
Yeah. So, if you look at the aerial, it's going to be back here, so there's a building, and you can't see the mouse. So, let me get-
Back here, you say, Peter?
Oh, that's too small of a pen, laser pointer. There we go. So, the warehouse is going to be right here. There's a carport for these apartments that is going to block part of the view. There's a building right there on Main. There is a parking lot here, but then there is a building on Main in front of that area. So, direct views of this from the street are going to be pretty limited.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, comments? Okay. All with that, can I get a motion?
I'll move that the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit U 2015-0009.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed abstention, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next item. Let Mr. Andretti back inside.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. The next part-
Wait, we have to wait for Mr. Andretti.
Oh, I apologize. Good use of time. Okay. Good evening, Chair Commissioners. The next project before you is a downtown permit for Mahatra mixed-use to occupy an existing building located at 504 South Broadway. This existing site is located just south of the public library, next to Sula Mediterranean Restaurant, with various office uses behind it. It fronts South Broadway, and it's located in the downtown-specific plan Gateway District. The proposal is to turn this existing building into a mixed-use project. Currently, it was a previous motel that was converted into commercial units. They are proposing to keep the commercial units that are located on the first floor of the building as commercial, that's 11 total units, and converting the second floor, which has 36 units, into studio apartments. In addition to that, they are proposing, here's the site plan, they're proposing on adding landscaping along the frontage. Currently, there is no landscaping, very minimal on the site. They're increasing that substantially, adding street trees, improving the landscape along the frontage. This is a view of the existing building as it looks currently, next to the public library that is on the left-hand side of the screen, and Sula Mediterranean Restaurant, which is on the right hand. They are proposing on doing some facade improvements to it, taking that existing building and adding some trellises, tilework, cornices, basically trying to do everything they can to take this existing building and make it look a lot better. If the site were being redeveloped, we would want an overall re-haul of that, the facade, but since this is a reuse, we think this is a great effort by the applicant in trying to make this a very attractive building with what is existing. This is the adjacent property to just the south of the project site. At the study session that we held a couple weeks ago, the adjoining property owner did come out for this restaurant with concerns about adding a mixed-use project next to their existing event center slash restaurant. With discussions with the applicant since then, they are taking measures to make sure to mitigate any effects that it would have on the adjoining property owner. They have agreed to adding triple-pane windows to their project, which shows up as a condition in the downtown permit itself. Also, there's conditions that they're going to disclose in their lease to all their commercial and residential tenants, that they are next to an event center, that they are in a downtown situation where there are traffic patterns and ambient noise that are present in an urban environment, and that there should be no expectation for residential-type noise levels in this area. They are along a major street and in a downtown environment. So, the applicant has agreed to disclose all that type of information to any tenants that he will have on this property. Currently, there is no open space that's being proposed onsite for the residents in the form of indoor open space or outdoor. Staff believes with the adjoining uses surrounding the site, such as the public library, the park, the theater, the mall, and Sula Restaurant next to it, that there are opportunities for recreational activities around the area that the residents can use. And instead of having onsite amenities and the reuse of this building, we thought if it was a new development, yes, we would require it, since it is a reuse, and we want to track these kind of mixed-use projects to the downtown, that that could be a type of concession that we would allow to really attract these types of projects. So, the applicant is currently not proposing any onsite amenities in the form of open space, but in the future, should the amount of parking not be warranted onsite, and they have extra parking, or want to convert some of the units into indoor open recreational space, that they could do that. And the applicant has agreed to explore that option, should that arise. As proposed, staff is recommending approval of the project with the conditions that are drafted in the downtown permit. The property owner himself is going to be managing the property. His target market is young professionals, college students. He's looking for about a maximum of two people per unit for his studio apartments that are located on the second floor. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the permit as drafted. That concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Atul Mahatra is also here and available for questions.
Thank you, Nada. Any questions for staff?
I would like to thank you for addressing those situations. It did come up in the study session. The owner of the adjacent property is very concerned with the noise, as I'm sure we are, I am. So, thank you very much for putting those in place. On the triple-glazed windows, they're quite expensive. Are you saying just on the south side? You're saying on the whole residence? What are we looking at there?
The applicant is agreeable to do it on the whole project.
And the doors, everything, extra insulation, anything, soundboard, is anything on that south side?
There isn't right now in the project, and they are just reusing the existing building. The Sula Mediterranean Restaurant does have a block wall on their portion that faces this project site, and then their, the project and applicant themselves is proposing to do the triple-pane windows. Again, they're going to disclose all of that to their tenants and notify them that they are next to that.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the applicant? Can we state your name and address?
Sure. My name is Atul Mahatra, and my address is 315 Mexjoe, in Santa Barbara, California. And so, as Ned already pointed out, you know, I'm really excited about this project. You know, I think this will be one of the best-looking buildings that we install in Maine. I think we're doing a lot of work in terms of landscaping, and really sort of falling in line with the vision of the new downtown-specific plan. And so, if you look at the elevations, if you look at the landscaping work, both along the side of the Sula Restaurant, as well as the Broadway portion, you know, we've essentially gone from zero landscaping to 10% of the entire lot area, right? As I've mentioned to staff already, you know, this is not housing that I'm intending for, you know, farm workers or substandard housing. I'm looking for young professionals who want to move into the downtown area, folks that are hourly workers that live or that work downtown and want, you know, housing close to where they work. Folks generally who bike to work, this would be an ideal location for them. So, you know, all in all, I think we made an excellent proposal, and we look forward to a favorable conclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mahatra, you already stated that your intent is not to-
Thank you. That your intent is not to do temporary or seasonal housing?
Right.
Anything like that, which I think we appreciate, especially in the downtown area. I think, were you open to having something written up to that effect for the property?
Absolutely, absolutely. Commissioner Dickerson, I've already mentioned that to Mrs. Ehr, that if that needs to be an additional condition, you know, as far as the downtown permit application, I'm happy to abide by that.
Okay. I appreciate that. That's my only question.
And I have questions. Was there any discussion? My concern, I think the project's great. I think it's where it belongs, and I think you're doing some great work. So, but with that, I do foresee parking issues with your neighbors, even though we have the off-site parking at the library-
Right.
-within 300 feet, because there's no perimeter fence, and there's a great parking lot that feeds into your residential units?
Actually, there is, actually, there is a perimeter fence, I'm sorry. So, you know, the fence between Sula Restaurant and my property?
Yes, but your residents can walk through. They can park in that lot and walk through. At least in my drive, this, I easily did that.
They would have to come all the way around Broadway, yes.
There's a back gate?
That's only if I give residents a key to the gate.
Okay, okay. Well, but I still think that's going to happen.
Okay.
So, was there any, have you given any thought, was there discussion about adding a disclosure about where the off-site parking is located?
That's a great point. You know, I haven't thought about that, but given that it's part of my condition, where Mrs. Ehr had already pointed out that there is additional parking available in the library, I'd be happy to, you know, sort of make that as part of my lease disclosure-
Okay.
-and let them know that there is off-site parking available-
Okay.
-at the library. But that's a great point.
I think that should be done. I don't think it'll alleviate the problem, and my, I would hope that you would talk with the owners or the Sula owner and address that before it happens. What are you going to do? Because that kind of thing can make neighbors not so friendly quick.
I agree.
And I can see it happening. But I love, and I think this is a case, that we have given a very valuable incentive with that parking, because this has a parking problem. And it won't last forever, but you've taken advantage of it. It's a good way to reuse a building and follow the downtown plan.
Right.
So, with that, I, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Andretti?
Yes. I have a question of legal counsel about whether or not we can, at this point, modify to preclude farmworker housing in this area? Is that something that would be possible? He's agreed not to use a temporary- He's agreed not to use a temporary housing, but I'm not sure, so I'm asking.
Commissioner, Chair Hernandez, Commissioner Roddy, I'm not sure I understand your question. If he voluntarily is willing to condition his property, we're not requiring him to do anything. I mean, I heard him say that he would be willing to do that voluntarily, and it wasn't...
Right, but my guess, the question is whether or not if farmworkers show up at his place or rent the place, can he lawfully turn them down?
Oh, I would think that that would be a question for his own attorney. There are laws about housing, people who apply on the same basis for housing.
But if we impose a...
If we're talking about H2A housing, that's people who are sponsored by employers, and that's a different thing than farmworkers.
But if we're imposing a condition as part of an agreement, doesn't that implicate the city's potential concerns? As he would say, "Well, I can't rent to you because I've agreed with the city not to do that," and so...
I understood that Chairman, excuse me, Chairman Dickerson, so used to calling him Chairman, his concern was specifically related to the H2A housing program, which is seasonal workers. I didn't hear him say that somebody who happens to be an agricultural worker wouldn't be allowed to work there. I live there, excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay. I mean, I would agree with you, that would be a problem if that's what staff conditioned or imposed on the project, yeah.
Commissioner? I'm sorry. Would the voluntary nature of it, if staff wrote that in as part of the agreement, would that be able to roll over in case somebody buys the property? And you have a new owner with a new philosophy, I mean, would we be able to write something up that it would actually extend to that new owner, or because the voluntary nature of this, is it just for this owner?
Well, when I said it was voluntary, I didn't mean it wasn't imposed as part of the conditions of approval. I meant that there's no objection from the applicant, and so it's more of a nature of an agreement. But once that's agreed to, that becomes one of the conditions that would carry over because the condition use permit runs with, or the downtown permit in this case, runs with the land. And it would be in effect as long as the project was operating in the way it was conditioned.
Commissioner Sefer?
One possible way to address this would be rather than to take a segment of the population, how about a time limit, like, say, a one-year lease, if you're worried about seasonal, that type of thing. They certainly wouldn't want to sign a lease if they're only going to be here for a certain amount of time. So, I think that could be a non-discriminatory way to handle it with a time limit, rather than a who's going to rent it?
I mean, that would be up to the applicant, because a month-to-month is very common in California. That some places, a year lease is the norm, and the month-to-month is rare. It's the opposite in California, especially for residential leases. So, that would be something that would be up to the applicant to do that. I think that, I understood Chairman Dickerson's concern, and something that would be legitimate for staff is to not permit, you know, employer to rent space in this for H2A housing. That's what I heard. I didn't hear anything about individuals asking for equal opportunity to live in this with any other member of the public.
Thank you.
Could I just, is the concern that you raise specific to the H2A program? It's not about maximum number of people in a room?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, it's what's occurred further north in town, and, you know, I would hate to see that end up in the downtown area. I mean, that's not what we're looking for. And frankly, that's not what the applicant, you know, has stated that he looks to do, and I take him at his word fully.
If I may, the H2A housing program is something that the employer, it falls on the employer to provide the housing. The occupants of the housing do not sign leases and not pay rent. So, the condition could easily be worded to prohibit that kind of arrangement, but it wouldn't prevent any other person from living in the unit on any other terms that are available to anybody.
Do we need to add that?
Yeah, I was going to ask of staff, if we could possibly add a couple of things, assuming that we get a motion, et cetera. But it would be about the H2A housing issue that we've just been discussing, and then also the issue about the parking disclosure.
Yes, I made those two comments to add a condition that will be drafted into the downtown permit that moves forward to council for approval, that would prohibit H2A housing on the site. And then, as an addition to the disclosure condition, to add the disclosure about parking in addition to noise and traffic.
Additional comments?
I just have one more. Somewhere in the hearings for the downtown specific plan, in the listing of the incentives, it seems like this project would qualify if it's available for the facade grant or loan?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
We have...
I don't know that the applicant's interested, but...
We have discussed that with the applicant. That is still a possibility for them, and they would need to go through additional application processes for that, but yes, they can do that.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, now we're going to move on to, is there any written communication that we received?
No, there isn't.
We do have public comment, though. If I can call Mr. Tom Lopez. If you can, you have three minutes, and if you can state your address.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Tom Lopez, 201 West Main Street. I'm in opposition to the project. We, my wife runs the restaurant south of the project. And looking at the staff report, I noticed that there were a lot of incentives based on the downtown-specific plan. The downtown-specific plan is a great tool, and I know that the previous commissions and city council members worked hard to try to create a document that revitalizes the downtown. Now, this particular property is landlocked. It does only have one ingress and egress onto Broadway. To intensify the project by really giving the base zone, really doing away with the base zoning and going to pretty much a 75% residential component, just seems really like not a fit. And the reason being, it's, the parking is one, traffic is another. We have conflicts at the exit now, people turning south onto Broadway, and customers going north onto Broadway. So, that's a concern. Some of the things that we have challenges with are parking there now with some of the tenants that run meetings there. The members that attend the meetings take up a lot of the parking. It's temporary, I understand that, but it still impacts our business on the south. One of the other things that I wasn't too sure of was, it seemed like the staff report followed a lot of the efficiency dwelling unit standards. It talked about, it talked about the lack, or the open space requirements. It talked about, I'm trying to think. The efficiency dwelling standards were brought about for the rest of the zoning districts outside of the downtown-specific plan. When the staff report included these, some of these findings to say, okay, this is a project that's worthy of these incentives, even though it doesn't really fit the EDU model, I'm sorry, the efficiency dwelling unit model, we can still extend these incentives to the project. I think it's a bad fit. I'm concerned with our exhaust, our exhaust equipment on the roof is on the southern side of our property. So, that is in close proximity to 12 units. So, I'm a little concerned with if, in fact, there might be some complaints due to the the smoke or the cooking odors that are coming out of the project. Also, I think there was a mention of some soundproofing on the southernmost units. It gets pretty hot up in those units, because I always see the people that are out there standing on the rail or just waiting for something else to finish up so they can go in there. So, one of the things was, you know, they're going to keep those windows open.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
I'm in opposition. Thank you.
Next is Clifford Rea. Ray? Will you state your address?
985 Amethyst Drive. I would like to speak in favor of this project. I was involved in the sale to the current owner. I represented the seller of the project. And speaking from my experience, any improvement to this building would be a blessing. He has hit a market. I do sell local real estate, and our office does do residential rentals. We will see 70 to 80 applications for small-unit rentals such as these. There is a high, high demand. It is a central location. And I think the market that he is targeting will be a leave-in-the-morning, return home in the evening. So, the mixed use there, I think, can be balanced with the businesses that are, you know, the normal eight to five, and the residents would be there in the evening. I speak in favor of this project, and I think it is a great, great need in the city of Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Peter Lopez. Will you state your address?
Peter Lopez, 201 West Main Street. Thank you for your time. You know, Tom has already addressed some of the issues there on the property to the south, which is Sula's Mediterranean Restaurant and Bar. I think we were actually one of the first businesses that went through the downtown plan when it was originally adopted. And we spent a lot of time, a lot of effort to get our venue up and running. We envisioned it as a place of entertainment, which we could provide live entertainment seven days a week, including a component we could have outside entertainment. And I'm seeing this while I, you know, I believe everybody has their property rights. I equate it to a church moving in next to a train station, and then, you know, complaining the day after they move in that, hey, you know, you're making too much noise. It's, you know, different hours of the night. We got a complaint Saturday night that we needed to close our back door, and it was people were coming in and out to have a cigarette smoke outside, and, you know, that's nobody there. You pack with 33 people there, on top of having the parking issue, where they have a gate on the south side of their property next to our north side that they continually open up, that they use for their meetings in the evenings, which, you know, is generally when we have our parking lot filled. We have outdoor lighting to minimize any potential hazards out in the parking areas. So, I envision complaints about that, you know, complaints about our music. You know, I'm looking at it because part of what we do as well is we manage properties, okay? And I can envision somebody taking a studio or a one-bedroom property in either being of transient nature, some sort of maybe rehab center or property, or if it's young kids, where are the kids going to play? Okay? We have a back parking area, which would be an ideal area for them to park. When we have trucks going in east-west from DMV, or people cutting across, heading east towards the DMV property, they speed through there. You know, where are the kids going to play? You know, I just see this as a great idea in a bad location. And I think everything should be taken into consideration what you're really, the precedent you're trying to take there. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to have Mr. Ken Huff. You can state your address.
Thank you. I'm Ken Huff, and I live at 1553 Eagle Street. And I'm representing the Santa Barbara County Action Network, which is a county-wide organization, which is very interested in preserving prime ag land and providing housing that's affordable to working people and having vital cities, livable communities. This project I'm speaking in favor of for us because it looks to us like it's going to provide affordable housing to people that would live or would work or go to school downtown. It looks like a win-win, although I understand what the couple of gentlemen just spoke about. There's always concerns with something like this. But on balance, we would support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we can have the applicant closing statement, if you would like to respond.
Let me address a couple of these concerns that came up in terms of parking, in terms of, you know, those units being exposed to the noise, and so on and so forth. Everybody has a right to pick and choose where they live, right? As long as I, as a landlord, am making full disclosure that, look, your unit faces a restaurant/club that potentially could have evening entertainment or daily entertainment seven days a week, it's their choice whether to rent it or not. And if I suffer from vacancy rates as a result of people not wanting to live there, then I guess I got to have to live with that, right? In terms of parking, we have 40 parking spaces, right? In terms of, you know, what's required by COVID, what's COVID that is, you know, the city has laid out. I think Nada came up with probably 18 to 20 spaces. We have double E-mart parking. If you speak to my commercial tenants, not a single one opposes this. They want to stay exactly where they are, right? And we're talking a mix of tenants that are either bookkeepers, a lady that makes dresses and orders clothes, a hair salon, a nail salon, a chiropractor. None of them are up here expressing a concern that somehow, when these units become residential, that'll impact their business. And what I find really curious is that, you know, for a person who's a business owner next door, right? You would invite, you would love the fact that you've got 72 residents potentially who would have, you know, would just walk over, have a meal, and enjoy the evening entertainment that you have to offer. Why would that be bad for business, right? So, you know, I'm a little, I'm at a loss here, in terms of all this opposition. So, you know, I hope we come to a favorable conclusion here. I think it's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the close...
Should I ask that a question?
No. Sorry. With that, we're going to be closing the public hearing. And if we can move on to the resolution?
I would like to...
Your questions?
Is it comments or questions first, Sheriff?
I do. The last comment that was made about having the food and entertainment next to the mixed use, I hope that a good number of those residents and those business owners do, in fact, become patrons and help each other in that regard. But I do think that the concerns that have been raised will bear out. So, my question, but I think the, I think they still are compatible use. But I'd like to know what staff's comment is about how you're going to address it when you get the complaint.
We can add an additional condition to the project that would allow the ability for, say, the director of the community development department, should there be any impacts to the adjoining properties as this project does move forward and is implemented, that the director of community development could bring this project back before the planning commission for, say, an update or a re-review at some future date. Should the project not be maintained as approved, operate in the manner which the permit was approved for, or impacts any neighboring properties? That condition could be added to the permit.
And if I could also add in, I mean, the comments by the neighboring property owner and the applicant, neither are wrong. It's going to depend on who moves into these spaces, and sometimes a person is disclosed of all the information, and they still are going to complain. With the disclosures and with the fact this is in a downtown and not in an R1 zone, you know, the city will be under the pressure to tell the person who's complaining, sorry, that business was there, they were there before you. And even if the... And even if the, if Sula wanted to expand, downtown wants Sula to expand. And so, like if, as the applicant said, they may not have events every night now, but they could. And, and from the city's perspective, we would want that. So, it does put us in a slightly hard spot that some residents are gonna complain, and if they try to, if they result in code compliance efforts against the other, one of the main things, or code compliance complaints, one of the things that is gonna be said is unless Sula's actually breaking an ordinance, there's, there's nothing that the city plans to do. And so, and that is gonna be challenging because they will be residents. At the same time, this is going to happen in a downtown. There are reasons to say maybe this isn't the right one, and, and the commission can make its call on that, and the council will end up making a final call. But there will be cases in downtown where there are gonna be people living very close to an activity that makes a lot of noise or has a lot of traffic or what have you. And so, the city is going to have to learn to have a party line, if you will, that you're in a downtown, and we put conditions on to make sure you knew about it.
We want both of these, as you say, to be vibrant and grow, and I appreciate immensely the incredible hard work that both have put in and will put in. And neither of them need the nuisance that is a constant refereeing match. And so, I think really the, the onus is, is going to be on you and your department to figure that out, because every dime, they do a test for the noise and say, yes, in fact, they're within the bounds of their permit, and then they come to you and say, you know, and a lot of people don't read leases, but you've, I agree, you've done all you can do in that regard, and I think your intent is to, to do the right thing, and you have experience doing it. But it would not be right, in my opinion, not to say this out loud, because I want both of you to do well, and I have a sincere interest in both of you finding ways to be compatible.
No. We're, it's back to the commission.
Yeah, I, I just want to voice, I, I understand the issues that the adjoining businesses have, but in this particular case, you know, so often what comes before us is a business that's gonna make a lot of noise coming in after the residents. This is one of the cases where the residents are coming in after the business, and so it's going to have a different dynamic, and it's gonna be dealt with by the city in a different way. In this particular case, I, I think you're gonna find that the type of people that rent from this space are people who truly want to have an experience of a vibrant nightlife next to them and might actually enjoy that rather than complaining about it. If, if the type of person that moves in really wants a very quiet neighborhood and preferably living next to a cemetery, this is not the spot for them, and they probably are not going to put in an application. So, as far as I'm concerned, I, I support this, and after hearing the others, I, I will make a motion.
Mr. Trump, ready?
Thank you. My view is that this is what's happened, what happens when a city's growing and becoming bigger. We have a busier downtown. These are conflicts that are gonna come up, and Sula was in business first. They have a right to utilize their property as they, within their permit, and we're putting in a residential units here, and they've gotta deal with, with, with Sula. Sula's here first, and so, and I think we're gonna see this as Santa Maria continues to grow. This is what happens in all the big cities. You deal with the, with the noise of the city, and so, this is as a downtown area. This is what's gonna happen. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this. I, I don't think of recommendation of having it come back before the planning commission is, is necessary in this regard. I think this is just something that's happening with our growth and with our ability to, to manage that growth, and I think this is a good project. It's an improvement over what it looks like now, and I'm gonna support it.
Mr. Seepert.
Just my view on this project, you know, I, I understand Sula's concerns, but the, the building was there first, next to you, when you bought the project. It was always, it always had these units up there, even though they weren't in use at the time. So, in the back of your mind, you always knew this day was coming. So, the, Mr. Mahora, Mahorta has, has the right to use his property, just as you do, and I think he's making a lot of concessions, knowing that there is a noisy facility next door. And, and I can't see not approving this, in my view, because he's got a great project here. It is located next to a busy business, but again, like the other commissioners have stated, the people that are gonna be renting this property know that. We've implemented some conditions on that property, and it's always had a place, the, the property's always been for residences, whether they were hotels or permanent. I can't see people staying in these things during the day. I don't know that for a fact, but I believe they'll be gone during the day. So, I, too, I, I favor this project. I think that it's going to be a big improvement for the street. The, the design that you have is a nice design, and I, I think you have every right to develop this property, as, as you stated. Thank you.
Commissioner Pratt?
I've said mine.
Okay.
Now, I'm of the same mindset of Mr. Dickerson and Andrade. I think I'm glad that we're having these types of conversations for once about a downtown area. We are gonna have to learn how to coexist. I think this is a positive way. I believe this is with, the way the city wants to move, and I don't see a problem with both businesses being in the same location. Now, with that, can I get a resolution?
Yeah. I'd like to move that by Resolution Number 26AD, we recommend to the city council the Mulhotra mixed-use downtown permit at 504 South Broadway, downtown permit DT 2016-0001, with the additions of the three items discussed, the, the H2A housing issue, the parking disclosure, and the impact violation.
Can I get a second?
Hold on. What's the impact, what's the impact test?
If, if it turns out that there's a, my understanding is that if it turns out that there's an inordinate number of complaints, that it would come back to us and we could discuss it at that time. But it's nothing that's going to impact them unless we decide, for some reason, that something-
Okay. Well, I kinda brought that up, but I'm not in favor of adding that.
You're not? All right.
And, and I don't think we should, that, that's kind of a, not, not the nuclear option, but it's, it's kind of an option that I think we should save for, for very serious-
That's fine. I was bringing it up for Ms. Pratt.
I think you did for me, that's why I'm sorry. No, no, I was just raising it that I-
So, eliminate that from the-
I believe that would be code enforcement. That would have to deal with that, not-
So, I believe we have a motion.
Second.
Okay. Can I get a roll call? Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Seepert?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Congratulations. Moving on to item number six, and one of the applicants is a source of income for me, so I will have to be recusing myself. And the chair to Mr. Dickerson.
Thank you very much. Okay. We are going to be going over, let's see, general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and development agreement for NKT Commercial at the northwest corner of Bederavia Road and Highway 101. Can we hear from staff?
Yes. Mr. Vice Chair and members of the commission? Okay. Mr. Vice Chair and members of the commission, the item here before you is the review of a general plan amendment and zoning map change, a specific plan amendment, and a supplemental environmental impact report. The agenda description in staff report also lists a tentative map, development agreement, and separate plan development permits, but as we go through the staff presentation and the report, all of those items are being recommended to be continued to a meeting on March 16th.
Which items?
The, it's shown as on the staff report, under, under number four. It's the tract map, the PD permits, and, and the development agreement. We may end up speaking very high level about some of those items, but we won't be going into too much detail unless the commission has questions. So, the, so the focus will be on the specific plan amendment and the environmental impact report. It's a very big project, and it's been a fast-moving project, so I'm gonna walk through the highlights of the report, transition into the main issues that were brought up prior to the report being released, and then I will touch on issues that were raised after the report was released. So, the, the area in question is the Enos Rancho's property. It's over 100 acres at Brad, at Bederavia Road and 101. The site is currently used for farming, and the most notable geographical element is that there is an escarpment that runs roughly one-third of the way up from Bederavia Road. So, beyond that is fairly flat, and south of that is, is fairly flat, but at different elevations. Overall, the site is a very highly-traveled area, making it a prime location to have, have commercial uses, which is what is being proposed. The site has a specific plan in existence that calls for a mix of uses, retail and commercial, residential. The new, or the prospective property owners of the, of the site have a new development plan that is shown in the specific plan, and there's, I think, even a, a small image in the staff report. And just a quick run-through, the land in red are commercial of varying types. The lighter red is still commercial, but it's auto sale, so it's, it's very specific, whereas the others are more in the standard type of retail or office. High-density residential is proposed in, in the northwestern corner, and then community facility uses, which could include a school, is intended to include a school, and a public park is, is located roughly in the center. A main component of the Enos Rancho's specific plan, the prior one and the proposed one, is that Bradley Road, which currently runs along 101, and then comes to a right-in, right-out intersection at this location, actually, it has a left turn, yes, yes, thank you. But a limited intersection here will be realigned so that it intersects at the existing intersection of Bederavia and Bradley Road, where it has the Toyota and the new gas station. That in itself is going to be a major street improvement that's going to help in the, in the north-south vehicle circulation in, in town. Also, as part of the project, College Drive is going to be widened, and two new streets are gonna be built within the project area. One, which is called unnamed street because it does not have a name yet, will run from College over to Bradley, and the other is an extension of Shepherd Drive that will run and end in a cul-de-sac at the future public park. The prior specific plan had a similar type of layout in, of these streets, but it has been changed slightly in order to accommodate the specific uses being looked at now. As a result of this change in where the land uses are and, and the circulation, we have to do a new specific plan, and we did a supplemental environmental impact report. From this city staff standpoint, we started with what the vision of the plan should be. Because of the freeway location, we've been commonly referring to this as one of the main, a front door of the city where shoppers who are coming in to spend their money in, at our stores, are gonna be entering into the town. And along the lines of when a builder is going to build a house, they put a little extra, you know, detail and emphasis at the front door that they might not put on the sides and such. We have been trying to work with the development team to put enhancements into the project so that we can have, have the best image that is portrayed by the project, which goes into the next item, which is, the two major goals of the project is to strengthen our fiscal base, and simply put, retail sales result in sales tax. Sales tax revenue is a big part of our budget, so a lot of the services that our community members are reliant upon will, will come from, come from property tax and sales tax, and this will be able to improve both. But we also want to take this opportunity to make the project improve our image as much as possible. People are going to be coming into this project and will judge the city by what they see. A lot of us drive into other, other cities and shop at certain places, and subconsciously or consciously, we, we make a judgment. We're very optimistic that, even though there's a lot of back and forth on the specifics of what we're doing, on the image, when all is said and done, we're, we're talking about having a really good project at this site or a slightly better project. The, if, there's a lot of comments from, from the developers that some of the things proposed may cause issues for them. Even if none of those issues that staff is proposing ends up being kept, it will still be a good project, and it will improve our image. Our belief is we can get a little more, but it is a lot of trade-offs and compromises that are gonna be presented to the planning commission tonight and to the city council as this moves forward to them. Also, along with the vision, one of the themes is improving the aesthetics in accounts, which was a council goal, and a sub-part of their goal was to have abundant landscaping and new development. So, that has driven staff's view of the specific plan and the development projects, not just for this project, but all the projects that we have brought forward over the last couple of years. And then lastly, in October 2014, we had that joint workshop with the council and the commission, where there was discussion about the city's streets, the major streets, and expectations for what happened along those streets and how we can improve them. We took, you know, themes from that discussion as well and, and applied it. One of the primary focuses of, of, of staff on this project is trying to improve the streetscapes. The private property is gonna be designed and maintained and landscaped by the property owners, and while the city has the ability to do a review of that, the streets are really, it's the public property. It's where, it's where the people are traveling up and down the streets in vehicles, in bikes, on bikes, or walking and such. These are just two images. One is just of a random city in, in the state, just showing a commercial street that has, has canopy street trees up along the sidewalk, up along the street. This is something we've talked about for, for downtown and for the Entrada specific plan and such. And below is an image of College Drive in the area of Entrada Este, where street trees weren't emphasized in the same way. Based on direction we've received so far, the feedback we've gotten is, in general, that the council and commission is interested in creating more of the top view in our future development, so that, that has been a focus. This originally came to a study session of the planning commission back in November, and there were three main issues that staff talked about that we wanted to see in the project. That was a strong streetscape, which, the street trees and parkways and such, having grand entrances, and these are mostly vehicular entrances into, into shopping centers and such, and having a lot of pedestrian amenities in the project itself. At the time, in November, we reported that for marketability reasons, the street frontage wasn't going to be at the level that, that the commission and staff had talked about striving for. This is trying to get as many buildings up at the street as possible and not seeing large parking lots. There's a variety of reasons that was described in November that- that it will be a major impact to the retail portions of the project if we block too much of the view of the retail behind it. So those talk about the grand entrances and improvements needed, but those seemed workable, just needing to have the sidewalks, special paving and trees, and then having plazas and amenities within the project. But the discussion with the commission was that a major compromise would be made on street frontage. But that would expect a significant of landscaping in return, if you will, and improved architectural design. So over time, we've continued to work with the development team to try to stay true to what was delivered to the planning commission in November. Also, a theme of the principles of what we've been focusing on, trying to get the highest-quality site architecture and landscape design possible, but as stated earlier, within realistic level of constraints. I think what you're going to be talking about most of tonight is what is a realistic constraint and what might not be. And that is, that's a matter of perspective, and there will be a lot of viewpoints. And the challenge for the commission is just to make the best recommendation on what you think is the best balance of the community benefits and what the businesses are going to need. Staff's recommendation is to focus on where the people will be or what the people will see. This will be the street frontages that people will be driving up and down. Hopefully, some will bicycle on the side streets. Maybe some of the residents will walk around the area. Once again, the entrances into the sites, into the main buildings, any of the public spaces, and overall circulation. Going into the specific plan areas a little more detail, I started off earlier talking about how it's split into these areas. Right now, we're going to go into Area 1, which is on Bederavia. This is literally the doorstep, then. If the project's the front door, this is the doorstep that everyone will be seeing as they drive in. The project is going to consist of a retail shopping center with Bradley Road running in between. Bradley Road will be widened to the point where it has multiple lanes. Starting from the freeway, there will be a three-story office building that will be the corporate headquarters of a local bank that will be moving their corporate headquarters into town. There will be two pad buildings and a large home improvement store, which on the next slide you will see is Lowe's. Then across Bradley is more of a true shopping center. This is pretty much Lowe's with a couple pad buildings and an office. This is a mix of retail stores of range of size. There are pad buildings that are, for the most part, are food-oriented. Two drive-thrus, one sit-down restaurant, and a building that could have up to four tenants, depending on the size of the tenants. To the rear are the larger tenants. This is the standard look that you see in town for a retail shopping center with a large field of parking. This is very important to these large tenants. And at this point, we can't disclose who all the tenants are, but there are a number of tenants who are not already in the city, and there's opportunity to make a dynamic mix of tenants. The focus, then, as stated earlier, what the people will see and where they'll be. This is an auto-centric center, so people will be driving in, so they'll be parking their cars and then walking up to the stores. There's a heavy focus on landscaping in the parking lot. That is actually going to be a topic of discussion, where the applicant is looking to change what is actually shown in the plan and what's in the specific plan. But heavy landscaping in the parking lots proposed. Street trees are proposed along the frontages as well, all going along with the council goal and the commission's goal of beautification. The major entrance to the main shopping center is located off of Bederavia, and there are buildings on either side of it. When the PD permit comes forward in March, we'll show you more detail, but we are very pleased with how that is working out. It'll really feel like you are entering into a shopping center without seeing the parking until you pass the buildings. That will make a lot more sense when you see all the pictures next month. But overall, the specific plan standards allow, in Area 1, basically what is shown on this map. These are the elevations at this time. They're very far along, and so we will be presenting these in detail at a future meeting in March. But it just shows a contemporary design, not the standard Spanish style that is common at crossroads in Entrada. And this is in direct response to feedback from the council and commission that there is interest in having a variety of architectural styles. Moving down into Area 2, which is... Area 1, we just looked at right here. Area 2 will be just on Bradley, just down the hill and up against 101. This is the proposed location for Costco to relocate. This is the site plan for the Costco project. The specific plan standards for Area 2 basically encapsulate what is proposed. The Costco building is pushed over to the freeway. A fuel station is located up along Bradley. The tree planting reflects the staff direction for abundant landscaping, and it meets all the specific plan standards. There is a rendering also provided that shows in general what the Costco is supposed to look like. Once again, more details will be provided at the future March hearing. The next area we want to discuss is Area 4. And this will probably be the area we discuss the most. It's a very important area. It's land that is going to be purchased by local auto dealers. And there's a lot of moving parts. As I believe the auto dealer representatives will say, retail and auto aren't the same thing. Auto, they have their inventory on the outside, in the parking lot along the street, whereas retail, you just park, and then you go in the building, and you see the inventory. So auto is very concerned about visibility, very concerned that as you drive up and down the street, you see their product. So in the staff report, there are a number of issues that the auto dealers have with the specific plan. There's a listing of the concessions and compromises that staff made or proposed in order to try to address them. I believe the concessions are welcome, but they haven't resulted in agreement on other issues. And so that will be discussed further. In general, the Costco building, once again, is here just for reference. The auto dealer properties are shown in multiple colors. This aligns with Exhibit H in your packet. The auto dealers have concerns with trees planted in the Costco parking lot that may block some of the freeway views of their properties. And they also have concerns about the canopy trees that the specific plan calls for. But I do want to note that in order to make sure the auto dealers have maximum amount of views where they have immediate view from the freeway, this area in red, staff is proposing that there be no street trees at all as a requirement. The auto dealers could choose to put something, but it wouldn't be a requirement by the city. And I believe this is about 900 feet, plus or minus. This is right up against where 101 is. And unless the trees for Costco are changed, this is where staff believes the prime view is. And that's why the line was proposed to stop at this location. If the commission chooses to do something else with the Costco site, then there may be a strong reason to extend that line. I think regardless, the auto dealers will have their story about why they want to change their street frontage, I believe regardless of what happens in the Costco. So we can come back to this if the commission needs to, to look at Area 4 and refer to the lots. But I'm going to let the applicant, when they're talking about Area 4, go through most of the issues. We do have an exhibit also in the plan, Exhibit G, that just shows an auto dealer that happens to be in Santa Clara that has canopy street trees. And we just wanted to show that it is done. Admittedly, it is rare. Most auto dealers will not have canopy street trees. One of the goals that we've been trying to work with the commission on is raising the bar on developments in town. And so this is proposed as part of this project to have canopy street trees on the portion other than shown in red. And then this is just example of the Toyota dealership that is currently on Bederavia and the other project in the other city. And in both cases, I think you can see it's an auto dealer. I think you can see the inventory. The canopy trees do block a little more of the building than the palms do. But we can also come back to this as a reference. Going into a little more specifics about the concept of the parkway and sidewalk throughout the whole project...
Peter, can I ask you a quick question on that last picture? If we determine that we wanted to have as many trees as your staff is suggesting, is there anything keeping them from putting the palm trees up rather than canopy trees like we see? In other words, are we just going to end up with a whole row of sticks? Or would we actually end up with a lot of greenery?
The specific plan proposes that along the street, that it be canopy trees. Once you pass the sidewalk, the auto dealers can landscape it in any way that they see fit. This is a sample cross-section of the street frontages. This part here is the street itself. There's the curb. This is the proposed parkway that would separate the sidewalk from the street. Staff believes this makes for a more safe and comfortable walking environment if the pedestrian isn't right up against the curb. We have some areas in town that have a parkway. We have some areas that have a meandering sidewalk that has a parkway that is wider than narrows. And then we have some areas that are monolithic, and that is the sidewalk is right up against the street. We support having this design because there are traffic calming benefits of having street trees with canopy closer to the street. Anytime the street is framed in a vertical manner or even horizontal with canopy, there are studies that show it leads people to drive a little more carefully. So that's a reason for that. Also, then, beyond the sidewalk, this amount of landscaping varies depending on the part of the specific plan you're in. For most of the major streets, we're asking for another 10 feet of landscaping before a parking lot can start. But we are saying that if you have a building that can encroach into the 10-foot area, we just don't want to see a parking lot right adjacent to the sidewalk. This is not uncommon with the street frontages for Entrada Este on the major streets. They're in the ballpark of 25 feet. It's just the sidewalk meanders. In this case, we aren't proposing a meandering sidewalk. Just for reference, once again, I don't want to go through them all, but this is a list, if you need to refer to it on the screen. That is the list of concessions and compromises that were made to offset whatever drawbacks staff believed would occur with the canopy street trees. Includes more sign area, greater building heights, special setback issues and such. This is in your staff report, and we're available for questions if you want to go through any of them. This is in the specific plan. It's Figure 3 at the beginning of the plan, and I think this will be one of the main areas of discussion. In red, it illustrates the area where the specific plan does not require any type of street tree at all. And then in green, those are the frontages where a canopy street tree is required by the specific plan. The applicant will be asking for the commission to consider changing where the green and the red are located. We provided it in this way to make it as easy as possible to change this without having to go and rewrite lines and lines of the specific plan itself. So simply put, for example, if the planning commission thought that the auto dealers in this area didn't need to have canopy trees in this section, you could simply make a recommendation that says, "Move, get rid of this part of the green line." If there's other parts that you want to remove as well, that's fine. You have the ability to recommend that the green line be put back where it was removed, but we're not recommending it because we do want to make sure that the important views are as clear as possible. So all of this was put into the staff report because the information and knowledge about the concerns the auto dealers had were known, and there were issues that staff and the applicant basically agreed to disagree on for the commission and council to make the final decision. Following the staff report's release, we did get a letter from UPC, who represents three of the developers that are a part of the project. That was emailed to the commission. I have a bullet list of that on the screen. It is extremely hard to read because there's a lot on the list. But the main thing from staff's view is outlined in blue. This is the whole issue of the canopy trees on Bradley and whether or not landscaping should be limited in Costco in order to preserve views into the auto dealers again. Texts shown in blue are things that we believe, based on a meeting, have been agreed upon. And so the slide after this removes everything in blue and just keeps what may be the remaining topics of discussion at tonight's meeting. Once again, I can come back to this slide and anytime you need it. So Area 4, once again, as we looked at this map, Area 4 has most of the discussion topics for this meeting. Part of the challenges is unlike Area 1 and 2, where the developer has already basically gotten all the plans done, so they know exactly what rules will and won't work for them. Area 4, they haven't started that part, they haven't applied for that part yet. They do have a conceptual site plan that I believe they'll be showing a slide of, but they haven't turned anything in to have staff review it yet. So that makes it a little harder that we are working with rules that we're not sure how it's going to affect what might be on the ground. But since the auto dealers haven't filed for any PD permits, one of the things that the commission should keep in mind is that staff has asked the auto dealers to make either a photo simulation or some type of exhibit that shows the views that they want to try to gain with and without the trees that are proposed in the plan. And those can come to the planning commission when they come for their PD permits. We can put language in the specific plan that gives the commission the ability at the PD permit stage to do that, or we can just try to solve it without any images where we're just trying to guess at what the views may or may not be. So that's what was asked of the applicant. Also, the other thing is, the specific plan is not written in stone. It can be amended. There are some elements that, with more information, the planning commission and staff may agree that a change should happen once we see their PD permits, and that can be processed. Just as an FYI, the specific plan across the street, which actually this was part of a long time ago, in its 20-year history, it was amended, on average, once every two years. So amendments to specific plans happen, and that's fine. I believe the applicant would like to tie everything up now, but we have conveyed to them that they're asking us to make calls on issues that they can't show us whether or not, what the scope of the issue is. Then lastly, this is a topic that's very important to the city from a fiscal standpoint and a budgetary standpoint. Mentioned sales tax is a major issue for the city. Mentioned sales tax is a major issue for the city. There are stores like a Costco that has such volumes that they are high on the list of revenue generators for the city. Auto dealers, they may not sell as many items, but their items cost a lot, and the sales tax ends up being a large chunk. So the expectation from the city management has always been that Area 4 will be new auto dealers. The hope was that some of them would be new to the area, but at this point, we're not certain. Initial information is that most of the area is going to be used as a relocation, in which, and that's the area in gray. This is not set in stone. It's just the way things look right now. It could change. So that means that the issue of the city's concern about the fiscal impacts will rely on what is backfilled from wherever these dealers are moving from. So there's a strong interest in making sure auto happens here. As shown on this, the gray are the ones where it looks like they're going to be a relocated dealer. The red are uses that are either a car wash use that's kind of to, accessory to the auto dealers, and a limited amount of retail, like a coffee shop, a juice place where it has some type of mix with the auto dealers. So at this point, the two sites that may be a new dealer from outside the area are really, just look like the two in yellow. Once again, deals can change. This is just the information we have at this point. So this comes back to the issue of the fiscal health, and the proposed PDC2 zoning normally would allow Area 4 to have a broad range of uses, any type of, almost any type of commercial use. Right now, the draft specific plan says any use other than new auto dealers and other than that car wash and small amount of retail that's already known about will require council approval of the PD permit. Normally, the PDs would stop at the planning commission. The idea is that would give the council the ability to make the call on the budgetary impacts of the development. A stronger option would be to make Area 4 an auto district. This is very similar to the auto dealers on the other side of Bedaravia. Entrada Este has that area as PDC2, but it's new auto. In that case, a non-auto use would require a specific plan amendment, which is more of a process and gives a little more control to the city council about the impacts these land uses are going to have on the budget.
When you say auto district, I mean, would that include, for instance, the car washes and things too? I mean, is that wrapped up in that, or are you talking about just strictly auto sales?
That would depend on the commission and council. At this point, staff would recommend that the elements that the auto dealers have already been talking about, like the car wash and the small amount of retail, be allowed in the auto district if an auto district is selected, but that is your choice. So one of the questions will be what the commission's view is on that, because the council is going to want to get as much input on that topic as possible. So there's lots of moving parts. There are some areas that I haven't discussed much because we don't have plans for the potential school and park site. Right now, we know it's a potential school and park site. The apartment site, we know is a potential apartment site, but we don't have any plans for. So I didn't go through it in this presentation. What we'd like to hear back from the planning commission in your deliberation is what your view of the vision of the plan is. Is it appropriate? What's your view on the development plan as a whole? That's this. Just for an FYI, staff recommends approval of the vision and the development plan. The standards and guidelines. One thing I want to make very clear is there are some standards and guidelines that are being talked about back and forth by the applicant and staff. Your input is valid on all of them. So if there's a guideline in there that no one's mentioned, but you think might not be a good idea, this is the time to raise that and discuss that. Then D, E, and F, these are really some of the main issues that we know the applicant and staff want input on. The streetscape, where it should be a separated sidewalk, where it should be a monolithic sidewalk, landscaping before and after, the street trees, what and where, and the auto zoning. Do we do more than what's in the specific plan now? Then there is a supplemental EIR. It is attached in your package. There was a prior EIR in 2008 that viewed what impacts that other project would have had, and the difference between the two projects from a sequoia standpoint really aren't that significant. The square footages are not that far off, the number of units aren't that far off. So most of the impacts that occurred under the old EIR still occur now. There are significant impacts that can't be mitigated. They're Class 1 impacts that need overriding considerations, and so that's on the list of motions that the planning commission is being asked for. And then while very important, but admittedly not complicated, is what to do with the general plan, land use policy map and zoning map. The exhibits you have basically make those maps match what the development plan shows. If you change something in development plan, we would then recommend subsequent changes to those two documents. But so far, in all our discussions with the applicant, there hasn't been any concern about Number 3 or Number 4. Once again, I can come back to this slide for the list of things that we're asking for input on. Next steps, we are asking for a recommendation from the commission on the EIR, the land use map amendment, specific plan amendment, and the zoning map amendment. We will take that to a future city council hearing that if the commission is able to make a decision, a recommendation tonight, that council hearing is scheduled for March 1st. Then if the council approves all of those documents, then the tentative map and PD permits for Area 1 and 2 would come back to the planning commission for final action March 16th. The goal of the developer is to start construction in summer, and right now, we are still on track for that. This is a very big project. It's a major entrance into the city. There's lots of issues on the table. Just want to close out by saying there's two major opportunities here. One is the fiscal. Staff believes the prime location along the freeway is going to make whatever happens here a success. From our standpoint, regardless of the tree planting, we think all of these businesses are going to do very well here. As stated earlier, the assurance of new auto dealers is a major fiscal issue to the And particularly from the planning division standpoint, the opportunity to maximize the community benefit of this project. We don't want to cause a significant issue to the success of the businesses. You're going to hear back and forth that certain things will or may not cause a significant impact. It's going to be your call on whether or not it makes sense to you. But I do want to make a statement that a lot of the back and forth is about, other past developments have done it this way, and so let's just do it that way again. I think one clear message that came out of the October 2014 joint session was we're not just trying to match what we've done before. We're trying to make things better. So still, that needs to be balanced with making sure it works. There are no right answers on any of these things. They're all a judgment call. So we're available for questions, but I do encourage you to allow the applicant to go through their presentations, because a lot of your questions may be able to be answered by their presentation as well.
So you prefer, I mean, are there any questions for staff at this time? No? Let's turn and draw. No? All right. Peter, would you prefer the applicant cover the entire area and all of the different sections, or do you want to kind of focus on the things other than Area 4 first and then tackle Area 4 separately?
I think that's up to the commission. I think that the applicant will be able to do that pretty well. I think they'll be able to separate the Area 4 from almost everything else, so that could turn them into more manageable types of discussion.
Is everyone good with that? All right, then why don't we hear from the applicant, and why don't we have them discuss everything except Area 4 if they can, and just kind of go over things? Thank you.
Okay, good evening. My name's Nick Tompkins with NKT Commercial. Thank you for listening to our pitch.
And for the record, what's the address? I'm sorry, sir.
684 Higera, San Luis Obispo.
Thank you very much.
So thank you again for hearing us, and the project, we're really excited in this project, and it's been a long time in coming, and we're really pleased to be here at this point. I did want to start off, and I've said this before, but I want to reiterate it again because it's truly heartfelt from my perspective, and I think everybody that's actually been involved in the project, that the level of effort and work and time that's been put in by the city and city staff, I mean, there's lots of people, lots of other people on this side of things as well, but I think it's kind of, from my perspective, my history unmatched. And so I wanted to be sure and extend my thanks and sincerity. It's not that we've agreed on everything, but the level of effort and back and forth, and candidly, I guess, very candid conversations, kind of with the pros and cons, and trying to understand why it may be important from a city perspective and why it may be a problem from ours, there's been, I think, a wonderful dialogue. And so I really wanted to start off by saying that, especially to Peter and Neta and all the work they've done there. I did want to kind of make you aware of who is here, in case there's any other questions that you have that might specifically apply to other people and parts of this project and their portion of the work. Lori Tamora from Urban Planning Concepts, Lynette Neuwes from Urban Planning Concepts as well, Russ Garrison with Bethel Engineering, Kevin Small with Plenere and the Landscape, Mark Stoner with Lowe's, Michael Tobes with the Tobes Group, Pat Kusak and Mike Bouquet with the Auto Group. And I'd also like to say Cliff Ray, who is with the Enos family, who together with his father, put up with us being a complete pest for an awful long time and continued to work with us in this thing, when they also have a large family that candidly can be tough. As you know, if you have kids or anything else, it's tough to get everybody corralled, and I think they had a big corral that they had to kind of bring everybody in. So it's been a nice process to get there, and it's been extremely helpful to us in this process. So this is our third time in front of the planning commission, and we came to the planning commission the first time on November 3rd. Actually, in looking at that project, what we had before you then, it looks entirely different today. We came forward with the Entrada Este architecture, as was kind of originally called out in the specific plan and the general plan within the city. And candidly, we listened to what came from Peter, from Neta, and from the planning commission to say, you know, look, we think this is maybe, maybe should go a different direction. But there was no supporting documents really to back that up. It was kind of what appeared to be a consensus and something that said, let's look at something grander, let's look at something different than historically has been done. Very candidly, although there was a financial impact to that concept, because the new style is more expensive to build than the old one, and candidly, for the most part, retailers don't pay more because the building looks better, but it is a better project. And I think that long-term, it will be better for the people that operate there, the tenants. It'll be better for the community, I think. I hope it will be better for the city, and I think it will be better for us in the long term. It's a little bit painful in the short term, but it has been, it's been an interesting process. So we went through, said, okay, fair enough. We'll take what we had, rejigger it, throw everything kind of out and start again. So then we came back on the 21st, on January 21st, with a California contemporary style, kind of more definition in terms of tenants, tenant mix, parking, and still had lots of what I would call site development, fine details that needed to be worked through. And from that time until now, and I think at that time, when we brought it forward, said, okay, it looks like we're on the right track, keep moving, this looks like the right process. So we said, but there were some details we had to work out, and really a lot around the, both the treescape, the way the buildings in front especially were positioned, especially if they had drive-throughs, and how could we make those kind of disappear but still function. And then on the individual architecture of each of the buildings, and I think on average, these buildings have gone back through kind of what I would call a review with the city about five times each. So to say, let's, and I would say that for the most part, they've continued to improve. And so it's been a good process. I would say, and this is kind of stepping away from it a little bit, but as kind of a lifelong resident here, and I grew up in Cas Millia and went to school at St. Mary's and high school at St. Joe's, and it really is an exciting thing for us to be able to participate in this and to try to make sure that what we bring forward is unique and maybe is something that has not, you know, till this date been done before, because I think it can be done. But there are constraints, and we're bound by obvious fiscal, you know, the fiscal realities of the world, and so there's some give and take that we have worked through with the city. There's a little bit more that, from our perspective, we need, but I do think that what we have to offer, and I hope what we can come away with tonight, we'll be able to make kind of a solid impact for the city and make the gateway and the doorstep and every other turn we've got on that project something that everyone can be proud of. So I think that's it. That was my part.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from sir? Mr. Tamora, you have something?
Good evening. My name's Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts, and I'm going to follow up with a couple of points. As Peter alluded to, we do have a couple of issues left in regards to the rest of the project besides Area 4, and we'll get into Area 4 in a minute. It's important to note that this property right here is part of--
Ms. Tamora, I'm sorry, just for the record, could you state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Lori Tamora, Urban Planning Concepts, 2624 Air Park Drive.
Thank you.
I guess my pointer is not getting there. Yeah. So yeah, thank you, Peter, if you can just kind of follow along. The area to the south of the project is part of the Entrada Este specific plan. To the south of that was the Bradley Squares area, where you have a park and a fire station, mostly residential. Within the quadrant that is immediately south to us, which was Area A1, you have the Home Depot, Walmart, auto dealerships, and some of the residential components, Panera, Starbucks. You know, that's all proven to be very successful. The city did it right in both of those planning areas. To the north of our planning area, you have the Ford dealership, as it has been existing there for about 20 years, the old Costco, and all of the commercial components in there, and those have proven to be very successful also. So the city doesn't necessarily do anything wrong. You know, we've gotten, there was a big decision to put commercial along the freeway back then, and it's worked well. What we have done with the city staff over the last eight months since we started this process has been phenomenal, as Nick Tompkins has mentioned. We did a lot of concurrent processing, which is unusual, where not only are we dealing with a specific plan, but we're also working through development plans to bring forth projects that will work within the vision of the city. We believe we have met all of the intent of the original direction of the city council. We are looking at something that brings a commercial element and commercial success to the city, financial success. We have done more than anyone else has done as far as the major streets. Major streets being Bedaravia, College, and a major portion of Bradley Road. Those are the major streets for this project. We have done twice as many trees on Bedaravia, at least-- We have done twice as many trees on Bedaravia, at least a third more trees along College than is currently required. Ironically, the illustration that Peter put up as far as the vision of the tree-lined street, had a five-foot planter area, a five-foot sidewalk, and a five-foot planter area on that illustration. What we're required is 10, 6, and 10. So double the amount of the vision that was shown on that project. And we're, and we're accepting that. That's part of our project. So we're twice as much of even the best vision that they brought forward to you in our project. The city's requirement for street trees is one for every 40 feet. And we're doing that plus another row of trees clustered or scattered throughout the project, but we're doubling up the, along Bedaravia, which is where the major corridor is for the city. We have three items that we'd like to bring up, and that's phenomenal. If you think about it, for the rest of the specific plan area to have been able to work with staff over this long period of time and only have three issues, that's a compliment to the city staff and to the design team. And I'd like to go over those right now. If you could flip to the next slide. Kind of already oriented you as far as what's happening around the project, if you can keep going. This is our build-out scenario. Again, we already have PDs for Bradley East and Bradley West, which is right along Bedaravia and the Costco site. These are visions of what could happen for the rest of the project, including the school site with, and there you go, the school site's right there. Of course, they don't have a design yet, but this is one that we thought would lay out nicely. It's been done in other school sites with the hardscape and then there are playgrounds below that that tie right into the city park. And that's where the proposal is to move the Enos house and make a sort of a rustic park area with the house being the centerpiece. To the north of that and the kind of yellow is the residential component. So these are the, the main things that we'd like to talk about today is the frontage of Battles Road, which runs, there's a easement area there, and then Shepherd and what was the unnamed street. And then we'll talk about the trees within the parking lots themselves. So if you can go to the next one, please. So here's an aerial photograph of Battles Road as it exists right now along the frontage of the property. And you have basically a bike trail and dirt with overhead lines. There's actually two sets of overhead lines on this easement, and there's a number of pipelines that run underneath. There's a number of different easements located on this property, but the city of Santa Maria does have rights over it to do improvements. And so we're looking, if you can roll to the next one, please. This is the same situation, but at the other side of town. This is the aerial photograph of West Gate. That project's fully built out. The city worked with the easement holders and the developer to put in a sidewalk and landscaping along that area that this has now been built out for about 10 years. Now, the question of the day comes into is can we plant trees on the easement? If you go back to the old one. We're going to do landscaping along here. We're working with the city already on how to landscape it with shrubs and grasses and features. Steph is requesting that we add another 10 feet to this area in order to plant trees because of the lines and the electrical overhead lines. We're asking that you not put that condition on this property, that we hold the easement line at the 30 feet off of curb. We work with the city parks department to do the landscaping that's required. And inside the projects, both the auto dealerships as well as the residential component, is we'll do landscaping within it, but it's not going to become a city responsibility, this additional 10 feet. And so we're looking for it to hold the line at where the easement is right now, where the property line is right now. And as the PDs come forward, we can work with staff on the landscaping for the property within their property lines, but not within the easement or extending the easement. Also, as you noticed in the previous exhibit, there were trees along the frontage there. So I think there will be a possibility for us to do small trees within that easement area as long as we work with the utilities both above and below. So we'd like to just mimic and as Peter noted, do something that we've already done before and just make it better. Okay, so that's one item. Pretty simple. The next one. This is Shepherd Drive and what we had been calling clear all along, but it's an unnamed street. This will front the residential, the school, and it will serve as the back drive to the auto dealerships, and it'll end at the park. What the city staff is again requesting is that we establish the 26-foot wide swath of land that will include 10, 20 feet of landscaping on all frontages, plus a six-foot sidewalk. What we're asking for is to make the street a traditional Santa Maria street, which is the monolithic sidewalk and 10 feet of landscaping. And we'd like to show you some pictures of the situation. This actually occurs in the West Gate project on Biscayne. On the north side of Biscayne is a parkway, and people are parking on it. And the parkway gets pretty beat up because people are parking their cars and walking across the grass to get to the sidewalk. Now, if you flip to the next one, this is at Hamana School, which is just the south side of Biscayne, Pasadena. And this is a monolithic sidewalk. And you can see that where people are parking and using the streets, the street for armed street parking, the sidewalk is really important to be monolithic. And then you have nice, well-maintained landscaping that's not trotted on as people are trying to get to their destinations. Particularly, I'd like to compliment Hamana School on their drop-down landscaping around their signage. I think that turned out to be a really nice picture. Ironically, the last picture is Shepherd Drive and the new parking lot that was put in for the auto dealerships, monolithic sidewalk with bark and palm trees. So we're requesting, again, a simple request that both Shepherd and the unnamed street, which are not major streets according to the City Council's direction, be monolithic sidewalk with landscaping on the perimeter. And the next item? As the design of the project was going forward, we realized that, you know, the architect was working on their stuff, we were working on the specific plan process. And when we finally got the last version of the specific plan, one of the standards in there was the requirement of trees being every three parking spaces. The city's zoning ordinance says trees every six linear parking spaces. And I was really surprised to see that because I didn't understand that that was going to be applied to this project until we saw that. And so we asked Peter, is this supplanting the zoning ordinance or what is that providing to us as a benefit? So we went back and we looked at the Home Depot project. And here's an example of a section of Home Depot where there is parallel or dual row of trees in one section, blocking the commercial component, which is fine, it's a beautiful section of the parkway. You pull into the project and there was palm trees along the frontage, and you can see the number of street, or parking lot trees blocking Home Depot. So even at every six spaces, you have blockage of the buildings. And then you pull further south and you're looking at Walmart and the same situation occurs. So whether you have trees every three parking spaces or every six parking spaces from the street, you're going to have tree screening of the buildings themselves. Ironically, that's a challenge for the commercial component because they want to be seen by the customers driving by. So we're just asking to be consistent with the city ordinance within the project itself for both Bradley East and West and for Costco to have the street trees every six parking spaces. That should be adequate to meet all of the requirements of the city because it's obviously worked in the past. And again, Peter, as Chad said, noted that we shouldn't be looking at the past, we should be looking forward, but I think this is one where we could say it worked in the past and we should continue to do that. Or you should be bringing forward a change to the ordinance so that every project is subjected to the same requirement. Those are the three items that we have. So I think the real question is looking at the priorities that the City Council brought before you. The highest priority is commercial success, financial response, the fiscal responsibility of the city. Secondly is how the project looks. There's tension with that. Steph has been very passionate and diligent in working with us to raise the bar, and they should be commended for it. I think these minor items that we're bringing forth to you to resolve are things that are acceptable to everyone and a really good compromise on these final issues. Now for Area 4, or do you want to talk about these three first?
I think we'll cover these first. Commissioners, anybody have questions? Mr. Andrade, do you want to start? Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may add one more thing, if we could flip back to the site plan, the overall site In that particular site plan, oh, you know what, that's the old PowerPoint, I'm sorry. We found out during this investigation of the three versus six, that the Costco plan already is designed at one tree every six parking spaces. And so the question was, why is one of the commercial elements being designed with one standard and the other being designed with a different standard? We'd like to be consistent throughout the whole specific plan and one every six spaces is the direction we'd hope this Planning Commission would go.
Look, Lori, are we talking about those little squares?
Yeah.
With the diamonds?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I don't have an issue with them at every six. Actually, I kind of prefer it myself. I think those little squares get in the way. I drive a larger vehicle. I think you still get enough shade from the canopy trees on the adjacent lots. I always go for the shade. I've talked to people out in the audience and they don't like the shade. They don't want anything on their car, so there's both. Not everybody wants to park under a tree. So I think that the six is, I don't have an issue with that.
But where are we talking about though? You say six.
Spaces, parking spaces with a diamond.
No, I understand what it is. I'm just asking where are you, are you, which areas are you talking about?
We're talking about the commercial use right now.
So we got the Costco, so I thought we were talking about the first one.
We are.
So I just wanted to kind of focus, so otherwise we're going to be here.
We're in the commercial area right off of Bedaravia, if I'm correct.
If I could request of the vice chair, sir? There is additional information that might help in your deliberation on each of these. Do you want me to, do you want to go through them one at a time?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and go through them?
Is there a favorite you want to start with?
Whatever's convenient.
Okay. Let's start with, on Battles. One thing, so Battles Road is Area 7, which is basically just a small piece of property along Battles. There is no intent for the 10-foot landscape setback that would be on the private property to be an easement to the city. That is not supposed to be an easement. That's just a setback on private property that's landscaped. And the plan says that if they're, if they're successful in getting it landscaped, that setback can be reduced by the commission when the PD permits come forward.
Okay.
So, and if we can get small trees in there even more so. We aren't expecting any trees in Area 7, just because if we get them, great. If not, we don't. So that strip that we've been talking, we would talk about just being on Area 4 and 6, I need to get the pointer. On Area 4 and 6, that would be-
So just, just so I understand, and as instructors, item number one on her issues, Battles Road, that's not going to be necessarily a disagreement? And we can deal with it during the planning development?
Well, we might. I mean, we have, there's lots of conversations that have gone on. This is the first I heard about the concern of this 10 feet being an easement. And in no way are we asking for any type of easement. It's just if, if we are unsuccessful in getting Area 7 landscaped, we're just saying there should be some amount of landscaping before the project starts, before the parking lot starts and stuff. But that that can be reduced, and the plan does not say how much it's reduced by, so it could be reduced to zero if that is landscaped. And so there, there's no intent to get an easement. And so I don't know if that addresses the applicant's issue.
So, so two points of clarification. So easement may be the confusing term. Are we saying use of operational land right there? I mean, with each setback we have, it's less land for the use on that?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, that's the trade-off. And then in terms of the easement, I have some comments, just to your point. I don't know if I rise to the level of disagreement, but I do have some comments on that.
Go ahead.
You want me to make them?
Well, I don't know, I just want some structure.
Right, I didn't want to expedite through that.
So, but her issues were, let's set forward for this, this thing. So the Battles Road issue, is that resolved now?
We would request that that provision be changed to say, the landowner will work with the city of Santa Maria to landscape Battles Road and just get rid of any requirement for additional 10 feet. Those will be dealt with, with the PDs, and it complicates the issue of what actually is happening, what negotiations are we going to have. We were required with other projects to build up to or design to the easement line and landscape the Battles right of way and that or the Battles easement, and that's what we'd like to do.
And so from the staff perspective, we don't think it's fair to impose off-site requirements onto another party. But we wrote it in a way that if we're successful, that setback can be eliminated. If, if, if we are not successful because the easement holders, the pipeline or the overhead line folks just aren't interested right now for whatever reason, we think there needs to be some amount of greenery before the auto dealer, you know, parking lot starts and before like the wall or apartment building starts. If we can get that landscaped, this says that whole setback can be, it can be eliminated. So it's a protection to the city to have a little more certainty that something will be landscaped. Because if we don't have that and we fail to get the agreement, then we will be faced with a PD permit where we'll be arguing about this. And we can take this out and just note that the intent is if we can't get that landscaped, we're going to expect landscaping and then just argue about it at the PD stage. But we thought it's better to have our intentions upfront.
And if they could just say Battles Road easement will be landscaped as the city has done with developers in previous projects, we're fine with that. That's, that's how West Gate and the city-
That's relatively, that's pretty open-ended though, isn't it? As they've done with other developers. As many developments as there are, each has its own nuance, doesn't it?
Well, again, the city has been successful in landscaping over two miles of this Battles easement. And we're asking that that be treated the exact same way. And so I don't, I don't understand why this is a concern to the city. Again, knowing some history helps in this because I worked on every single one of those projects and negotiated with the parks department and the landowners of those easements to get the landscaping. We just don't want to infringe this condition on the edge of either Area 4 or Area 6.
Did you have any further questions on that particular? No? Is that, does that sound reasonable? It seems reasonable to me.
As, as long as everyone is clear that if we're not able to get this for any reason, we're going to be asking for a landscape strip on the private property. And I'd rather not hear that PD- And I'd rather not hear at that PD stage that you should have asked for it in the specific plan.
Is there going to be an issue with that down the road if that, if that comes about, Ms. Tamora, or are you...
The city of Santa Maria has been able to negotiate the landscaping of this strip in other projects, so the concern is not there.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
Do we have one more sub-issue with this in that who is doing the negotiating with the easement?
We have been able to, just, we have worked with the city of Santa Maria. We, as landowners and developers in the past, and with this landowner that's putting this project together, have worked with the city parks department and the city to establish the landscaping plan that will work for the easement holders. So the city is a party to this, because they already are a party to it, because they have a bike trail on there.
And in your perspective, does the language reflect that balance of a partnership?
Right.
Peter, did you have more of the three sub?
Next. The next one is, let's do parkways. So this was a topic that was raised very early, and so a lot of the information is kind of in people's memories. I don't want to show that. The, one of the key things in the vision, there's been a lot of talk about consistency and stuff, one of the key things in the vision was to have a consistent streetscape in the plan area. And there is no question in staff's mind that a separated sidewalk is a much nicer environment as a pedestrian. We also know that having the street tree closer to the curb has benefits that don't occur when the street tree isn't at the curb. There aren't a lot of examples of this in the city, that is true, but there are some neighborhoods that have this, and if we did an exhaustive search, I'm sure we could find some non-residential areas that have it. But our point is that the streets that are being talked about as minor may seem, they're certainly not as heavily traveled, but Shepherd, for example, is the path to the park. It's the only street that a member of the public will be able to get into the park. So while it may be the back end of the auto dealers, it has other uses. It's also, the school's going to be there, and we've already talked to the school district about how we're trying to do a separated sidewalk, a parkway. They're okay with it. So, and we've also talked on Shepherd in particular, because that is the backside of the auto dealers, that the 10, 6, and 10, if you read the plan, it doesn't require that. It's 10, 6, and a 5. The, so the 10 is being requested because of consistency. It's also being requested because there have been a lot of cases, examples of a tree planted in a small area and not doing well. And it's also was a negotiation on the public utility easement, which is normally behind the sidewalk. We talked about, well, why don't you bring that up with the street tree easement up to the front? So I think the main issue is really the fact that we're asking for something after the sidewalk, because the 10 and 6 part is the same either, either way. Could it be less convenient for people parking? You know, possibly. The people who will be parking on this street primarily are going to be the auto dealers' employees, could be school, could be teachers. We're not sure that could be the area, that could be the area where the parents are dropping off kids. So there's lots of things out there. But when you put the tree further away from the street, it loses a lot of benefits. Plus, now we're not consistent on the path to the, to the park.
Can I just ask one question? With regard to the alignment that you're suggesting, are we talking about the area in front of the residential area as well? Is that part of Shepherd?
Yes.
So it's not just residential and schools, and it includes the residential?
Yes, it's residential, school, park, and the backside of the auto dealers. There were images shown of a parkway that admittedly we can't build anymore, that's not allowed by state law. You can't have a lawn in the parkway. We, as a city, cannot do that. So we can guarantee you it won't look like that, because it's not allowed. There was an image showed of the auto dealer further down Shepherd, and it is possible that probably there'll be a little more landscaping in it than what's shown, if I can get it to come up. But that it's going to be something drought tolerant looking along the street. Once again, there's several studies that show pedestrians feel so much safer when they're not walking right next to the cars, even park cars, and that the trees have a benefit. So we are, we are recommending that stay. We are also not, we haven't designed the parkway. There could be scenarios where special, you know, paths of pavers or concrete are even put in the parkway to make it easy to get from your parked car over. The main thing we're looking for with the parkway is so that if you're a pedestrian walking down the street, you're not right next to the cars, and the street tree is as close to the curb as possible. More paving can be put in if, if the applicant in certain areas feels it's important, you know, for the parking. I can see that for the apartments, possibly, also on the case of the, of the auto dealers, the school, when they come in and decide where their ins and outs are going to be, there's going to be a negotiation on exactly how it's all designed anyway. So I don't want it to be discounted that the unnamed street in Shepherd are going to have a lot of traffic. They won't be like the major streets, but they're going to have significant traffic and a mix of types of traffic. And so I know in the case of the apartments, they are viewing the issue, if they can get this switched, they can get their buildings closer to the street. And well, it actually wouldn't, we would then put a setback similar to R3 in place. So they wouldn't actually save anything there. Plus, the parkway is going to be managed by the city, and we've worked with the Wreck and Parks Department on, on trying to figure out how that's going to happen. So the property owners won't have to worry about the wear and tear. That's going to be something that, that the city will be doing. So just as a whole, this has been vetted through multiple departments, and there are multiple reasons why we're trying to do this. And so unless there's a major reason, staff is recommending that the parkway stay as is. And I want to note, Entrada Este has, for the commercial areas, a 10-foot setback required behind the sidewalk anyway. So the areas where we are asking for 10, it's not unheard of. But as stated, Shepherd, the plan allows it to be reduced, and for the apartments, it's not allowed to be reduced because they can't put their building that close anyway.
Questions regarding that item? Next.
Parking lot trees. This is something where we agree we should enforce the ordinance, but we read it differently. So the ordinance says there should be a minimum of one 15-gallon tree, a minimum of one 15-gallon tree shall be provided per six parking spaces. Does not say linear. So there's space here, and yes, if you go, I need to go to the pointer, thank you. Right now, it's hard to see, but there's a number there that says 24. That means this whole area has 24 spaces. Based on the one per six, because they're parking on both sides, it actually looks exactly the same as if it's three in a row. What I believe, what we're concerned the applicant is asking for is, are they asking actually for one per 12? Because when we view this, we actually think it meets the ordinance, but we want it to be clearer that we're talking about three in a row on one side tree, three in a row on one side tree, not six. So how do you count the six? Do you count six this way, six this way? The Enos Rancho's Mercado project that is Area 3, it's, you can't see the lines, but they are spaced exactly the same way that we're proposing. The cost, this is out of the plan development permit for Area 1. So they did draw it, Costco meets this. We understand that there's a concern that when these trees mature, that the canopies could get pretty big and block a lot of views. We're open to talking to the applicant about species and such. For street trees, we are looking for big canopy trees that can overhang the sidewalk and overhang the street a bit for traffic calming and other purposes. In the case of the parking lot, we don't necessarily want the tree to start to get too big, because there are a variety of issues, plus the applicant has issues with them as well. So our view is that the specific plan actually reflects the ordinance a little clearer. Also want to note that the Beteravia Plaza project, as part of their agreement, they're doing the same thing. There's other projects that we can point to that we've, that the planning commission has looked at recently or heard of recently that are doing the same thing. And so the applicant may have a concern with the specific implementation of this, but there is a section in almost every area, including Area 1, which is where the applicant has the greatest concern, that says, "Alternatives that provide equivalent aesthetic and/or environmental benefit can be considered on a case-by-case basis, subject to planning commission approval of the plan development permit." If they come in and say, for some reason, this here, where there are three, they'd like to make that two, but they provide it somewhere else, the planning commission can find that that is, is equivalent and, and approve that. So from our standpoint, we, we think changing it to six linear is actually half the requirement of the existing ordinance.
If I may respond to that, just, is that...
Go ahead.
You know, I can attest to other projects that have been processed in the city of Santa Maria, and I can attest to, you know, staff's interpretation of the ordinance, but for 30 years of working in the city of Santa Maria, every commercial project that we've worked on, the design of the parking lot has been six linear parking spaces before a tree is planted. And so if there is an interpretation that now has been implemented, I think this is something that needs to come back to both the planning commission and the city council, because this is definitely counter to the interpretation of the ordinance and how projects have been designed in the past. We are asking to be treated, we are asking that this project be treated like other projects in the city of Santa Maria that have met the current ordinance with six linear parking spaces. And again, we can have that dialogue, but I think it's unfortunate that this interpretation has gone on without clarification of the ordinance.
Peter, is this, is this a new interpretation, or...
Yes.
Or have we, I mean, have we changed something?
I mean, that's the literal language.
No, no, I guess what I'm saying is internally with, with staff and the department, is this different than how you've done it in the past? Or when a project has come up, has it come up with the other interpretation, the linear, and now we're trying to put more trees on, so we've come up and said, ah, there isn't really a definition here, might as well.
It may have, but I pointed the Enos Rancho's Mercado project that was from five years ago, I believe, at least. So it could have been inconsistent, but there are other projects, and you want to answer that? No? Okay. So I think there's a difference of opinion, but as stated, we have a council goal of abundant landscaping and new development. The ordinance does not say it's linear. If the commission wants to make it that way for this, this project, that is, that's within your authority. But it would be a reduction in trees based on what was analyzed. And I do want to note that the basis for allowing extra sign area in these retail areas is because of the tree planting. And so we would not recommend extra sign area if the tree planting is going to be...
So is part of a, is part of a deal struck? Is that right?
From our standpoint.
Again, remember, we already doubled the trees on the street spaces themselves, and we are...
Well, but that's because the building, you know, we agreed rather than have the building up.
Right.
So we went through that, okay?
Right.
So that we wouldn't see this huge parking lot. And Lowe's was committed, and so we, we recognize that that's a, that's a business concern. So I think going back to that really doesn't help us, at least doesn't help me in trying to figure out what's, what's reasonable here, because I think there may be a compromise here, but what's reasonable?
Thank you.
So is there, is there something that, that we can meet in the middle here, and maybe...
Well, one of the thoughts that we had is, and part of this is involved, you know, greenhouse gas emissions and some of the other elements, and, you know, there are plenty of other opportunities within the project to plant trees, such as along College Drive, at the park. And if we lose 13 trees in this parking lot, trust me, you will not notice it, because we have so many trees in this parking lot already. You can already see it with those end islands there, that there's three or four trees with each one of those end islands. And so I think if we lose about 13 trees in this parking lot by changing those diamonds distributed throughout the project, we can replace those in other parts of the project.
So is that what we're looking at, 13 trees?
Yes.
Changing it from six linear, changing it from what we're, what we wrote to six linear would, would be much more. If the issue is 13 trees, there's already language in the plan that gives the planning commission the flexibility to do exactly what was mentioned, to even elsewhere on the site. They are planting a good number of trees even along the rear at the escarpment, and, and they're doing more than, than other projects have done. So there would be a variety of ways to get credit. If this is about 13 trees in this part of Area 1, we think the plan can give a lot, has the flexibility to work around that easily. And we would support 13. That's, that's not an issue to us.
At least in my, my view of this, it seems, it seems reasonable to try to work around the rigid interpretation using linear feet, and when we're really, what are we talking about? We're talking about 13 trees, I think that that seems to...
If, if we're talking about 13 trees.
Have you drawn that up? Do you know for a fact that's 13 trees?
It's 13 on the west. We went through this today, because we were, we were trying to figure out what would be a compromise with staff. And, you know, if it, it just opens up the parking lot just a little bit so we can breathe, because these trees are going to have canopies, it is very tight, and we had lots of landscaping throughout the project. And so anyways, that, we thought this was an important issue to bring up for all of the commercial components, both Bradley East and for Costco. So those are our points. And you know what, if, these are the only ones we're talking about, I think we've been a very successful project. But then we have Area 4.
You mentioned Costco there. Peter had said that Costco is consistent with, with your, what he's got here in the retail area, is it?
We understood that their plan was one on every six.
Yes, but we've just found out that there's different...
Six what?
What are we talking? So Costco is six linear?
Mm-hmm. Yes, every 12 spaces. That's what they, that, because we, they've been working independently, and so we haven't seen their final plan.
If I may add, just to clarify what Ms. Tamora just said, 13 trees on Bradley West would be the reduction. Bradley East hasn't been calculated. Bradley East does have a significantly more parking lot trees that this, this regulation would impact than Bradley West does, because of Bradley East's configuration. So we're only talking about one portion of Area 1. So there's still the calculation of how many trees that would determine on the second portion. So there's still the calculation of how many trees that would determine on the second portion, which is the Bradley East component of it. As far as my recollection is, in their latest submittal of Costco, they did, they did meet that one per three linear feet to their best of their ability.
Three spaces.
And just, I want to reiterate, the, the plan allows the commission to consider alternatives to the standards if it's, if you find it's equivalent.
At what stage?
At the PD permit, so this would be next month.
Permit state?
At the permit state. To staff 13 trees coming out of Bradley West, and let just hypothetically say 21 out of East. I'm making it, I don't know, I have no idea. But it's somehow accounted for elsewhere. Given the number of trees we're talking about, we would completely support that, that the commission, and we'd recommend that you use the flexibility built in. So we don't see the need to change, because our belief is Costco meets the rule we're talking about.
I'm looking at this drawing right here. The east portion looks like it's got a heck of a lot more trees than the west portion.
Yes, it is, yes.
Yeah, I mean, a heck of a lot more.
It has more parking lots.
But they, no, they don't even look from the, from the top view. They look much closer together. I mean, it looks like a complete different configuration.
The illustration that you have in that set was the illustration that was done at about 4:30 this afternoon, which showed one per six on Bradley East side, and then one per three on the Lowe's side. So you can see what the difference is between those two.
It's a big difference.
It is a big difference. So that's why we're requesting this item to be clarified. And we thank you for your time on these items.
Thank you, Ms. Tamora.
Unfortunately, the presenter for the auto dealerships could not leave Texas today for personal reason. So I'm going to make the presentation.
Okay, all right, as soon as we get to that, we will have you up again. Any, any further questions from commissioners, from staff, regarding everything except 4-4?
So staff would recommend just making the change to the battles with the, all the disclaimers. But making the change, as was requested, that we work with the developer and the landowners to handle that landscaping. Once again, with the caveat that if, if when the PD permits for those areas come in and we don't think that landscaping is going to happen, we are going to ask for some landscaping on the property.
We're back on battles?
Yeah, go ahead. So, so that one, we're recommending making the change as requested. Streetscape and parking lot trees, we're recommending keeping the same, particularly with parking lot trees, noting that there's built-in flexibility and that what's been verbally described doesn't jump out as something that staff would have any problem with.
And you're listening to what the, how the planning commission is going to come out on this?
This is just our recommendation.
Right, no, I understand. But you're listening to how the planning commission is looking at this as well. Okay, reasonable, probably.
Okay, are there no other questions about this particular portion?
The other, this flash drive...
Does staff want to do their side, their portion of 4 first? And then we'll have, or have you gone through everything that you want to talk about? I've gone, I've gone through the high level. I think it's going to come down into details that it might be beneficial to hear the applicant's side first.
Ms. Tamora?
Can I have one question?
Oh, absolutely.
So, so the, on the split sidewalks, we're talking College, we're talking the unnamed street, and we're talking Shepherd. All of those have that 26-foot?
Yes. And we're asking for a reduction on Shepherd and on the unnamed street.
To a monolithic five-foot, six-foot sidewalk with a 10-foot or...
10-foot is fine, because we'll be able to...
Five and 10.
We'll plant trees closer to the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Peter? I just want to comment, College, Shepherd do not have, have the 26-foot requirement.
Excuse me?
College and Shepherd do not have the 26 requirement. There's a, there's a portion...
But are you saying that, you're saying that College doesn't have that requirement when we go beyond to the south? That's the way College is built?
Let me show you the exhibit. That is going to be hard to read. So everywhere has the, everywhere is proposed to have the parkway and the sidewalk. This shows by color, and I apologize that, that two of the colors look very close to each other. But I might need to get to the pointer. The area in green are the places that require the 26, except any building monument sign or special element is able to encroach into it. So it's really just saying parking lots have to be 26 feet back. The area in hot pink is only if they re, if they change their approval. Area Three is allowed to develop under their old permit. If they change their approval, they would have the same as the green. But once again, encroachments are allowed. So then we come to Shepherd, where the, the backside of the auto sales is just five feet. That's in the specific plan already. So for them, it's 21, not 26. The, if a school goes in right here, which is where it's being proposed, there is no landscape setback beyond the sidewalk. Because they're likely to have fields right there, and they're just going to put their fence, and that, that's, that seems fine. We talked to the school. They do think that they'll be able to work out having the extra 10 feet. But we've built in that it can be reduced. This is where they're planning on having their, most of their parking. So they don't want the parking right up to the sidewalk either. So they're, they are expecting to have some level of landscaping. The plan allows them to have, just asks for 10 or less. They are the school district. They don't have to follow our plan if they don't want to. They do have to put the sidewalk where we established the easement. But as I said, I talked to the school district, and like we saw on that other school site that we saw picture of, they work hard to, on their new schools, to make sure the landscaping is nice. So the auto dealers only have five feet after the sidewalk. And then they can have a wall, a fence, their, their, their parking. The residential in Area Six normally has greater setbacks than non-residential. So we aren't recommending they get any encroachment options. So they are 26 without encroachments. But their setbacks are normally 20 or 15 feet behind the, behind the sidewalk anyway. So we don't believe that's a major issue.
If the sidewalk was monolithic, wouldn't that change where the building could go?
We would then put the R3 required setback in.
20 foot behind the sidewalk?
Yeah. So it, it wouldn't change where the building would actually end up. So I think the main issue with, with, if, if the auto dealers feel that five feet is super important, then yes, they, they are going to, you know, continue to raise it. I think for the residential area, they should have the 10 feet after. And it's really then just a question of, can a parkway be designed so that people who are parked on the street can get across it? And we think it can be.
Peter, you done with everything, and 4 as well? Is that right? We can move on to Lori's presentation?
Thanks very much. Again, Lori Tamora, representing the auto dealers, Pac Fuzak, Mike Me. Thank you very much. Area Four is a very critical part of the project. And I'm going to flip through these slides pretty quickly because of time. There's a vision here also. And the vision is to bring up a high-quality, modern auto center. Here's an example of a Mercedes dealership. Again, you can see very little landscape. The cars are the product to be showcased. What I like about this picture also is you can see cars through the glass, even some on the second story. So this is a way of showcasing cars in this modern era. If you go ahead and flip. Inside, you can see how they're being displayed. If you look through that glass, you can see out to the main public street. And again, there are no trees or landscaping from the dealership to the street. Go ahead. These are high-end dealerships, maintained well. And this is, again, what we're hoping to bring to Santa Maria. Here's a Toyota dealership showcasing the cars out front. And again, very little landscaping to block the, obviously, the signature building as well as the cars. Go ahead. And then here's an Acura. And you can just flip through these now. These are just illustrations. This is a Lexus dealership. You can see there is some landscaping, but again, very sparse. Don't want to block the car dealers. Here's another one out of Santa Cruz. This is a Toyota dealership. And monolithic sidewalk out front, nice signage, and very low landscaping. Go ahead. It's very important to say that the parking structure area in front is the showcase. Most dealerships will have a nice promenade coming into their building, but it's all viewed from the street. In this case, you have a monolithic sidewalk. In our case, we're agreeing, we're compromising with staff to continue to have the parkway and then a sidewalk, and then more landscaping along Bradley Road. But we don't want the trees. So if you can go ahead, here's, again, the drive end to the project. Keep going. Here's a Chevy, new Chevy dealership. That is probably one that will move over here. Honda may move over here. Go ahead. Here's the example of the dealership that Peter actually showcased earlier with the trees at the corner. And if you go to the next one. Once you make the turn is where the problem is. Because the trees are blocking not only the cars, but also the building itself. And as you look down the promenade, you really don't see the full lot. And it ends up deterring people from going into the dealership. Again, this is a monolithic sidewalk with a green belt, which is at least a little bit better. But, you know, putting trees out front to block the inventory, you know, put shade on them, put birds, you know, doo-doo on them, whatever, is just not what dealerships are doing now. Okay, keep going. This is the dealership prototype. Palm trees are what they'd like. You know, this one does have the monolithic sidewalk with some grass. If you can go ahead, keep going. And now you put the trees in front of it, it's a totally different experience. And the reason that it is, is because you're blocking the inventory, you're blocking the view of the buildings. If you can keep going, and, and just keep going. These are just examples. Going ahead. So you can see it changes the way the product is displayed, the inventory. And now what we want to do is identify, what is our competition? Our competition are those dealerships, high-end dealerships in our area. This is Santa Barbara. This is what we want at this dealership. This is Mercedes, Jaguar, and BMW. That's what we want. And that's what it looks like from the freeway. Go ahead. This is San Luis Obispo, right from the freeway. This is the Mercedes dealership. This is a smaller one, and, but it's direct view from the highway. This is what we want. This is a particular project that I'm going to go very fast through. It actually ended up, oops, I'm sorry, if you could stay there for just a moment. Those two circles are auto dealerships in two different cities that were starting to be built at the same time. And what ended up happening, there's a long story to it, but what ended up happening is the dealership within Chandler filled up. The dealership on the other side, you can see the subdivision that they made there with the curvilinear street. They couldn't fill half of it because of the loss of inventory that went to the other dealership because they had direct street access to the project. So street access, street visibility is paramount for an auto dealership. Go ahead. So this is what looks like in Chandler now. This is the success story. This is current. This is what is the state-of-the-art for auto dealerships. It's not hiding the product, it's not hiding the buildings. It's your tax revenue and your product that you want to sell is right here in this display. Go ahead. There's opportunities to do some landscaping with, you know, low bushes and shrubs and crushed granite. But again, it's all open, it's easily accessible. Go ahead. And again, here's this, this particular dealership. Okay, flip to the next one. This is the dealership that went under, or part of it didn't get built. And it's because that city required street trees along the whole front of it. And as the sales went down, and the ones that did go into that dealership, they didn't backfill or fill the other lots. They're still vacant today. So it, you know, as, as much as we want, or the city wants to establish this signature project, it also be, has to be cognizant and aware of the success of particular commercial enterprises. And auto dealerships are not general commercial. They're not residential. They're a special animal that needs to be treated differently. And by having, having that open parking, that open visibility all the way along the frontage is paramount. Okay? And again, here's the trees that were blocking the lots that couldn't be sold. And you can, and this is, again, down the street, you can barely see the cars at this point. So you can just keep going. So this is our, a preliminary layout of the commercial enterprise for the auto dealerships, the campus that's being created. And it's, if you can keep going. The question is line of sight. What's the line of sight from 101? As you're coming south, staff has identified the ability for keeping a portion of the view shed open, just like Ford dealership currently has. Clear view, couple of palm trees and their signage. What we're asking for is a very reduced landscaping along this section of Bradley Road, so that you can, if you can flip to the next one. So you can continue to keep that view corridor open so you can see all of the different lots, the auto dealership lots, all the way to the park. So keep going. So at this point, you're being blocked now by the street trees on Bradley and the, the street trees along the Costco site. And keep going. And here, if you are looking at it from the northbound 101, you wouldn't be able to see most of the auto dealerships until you're much further up. So our request is a couple. First of all, we would like to have no trees on the east side of Bradley Road. We will agree to the 10-foot landscape, the monolithic side, or the sidewalk, and then additional 10 feet of landscaping as identified by staff. We'd like to work with the city staff and Costco on reducing the amount of landscaping that is on Bradley to the east. So it opens up some views, maybe cluster the trees, do some creative stuff, rather than just having a linear blockage of the auto dealerships. So our biggest concern is the landscaping along Bradley Road. We're also concerned about the landscaping within the Costco parking lot itself. Again, we think it's overabundant. And in, that in and of itself could be blocking views to the auto lots. And we are looking at either smaller trees or fewer so we can get a clearer view of the dealerships. Of course, this planning area also makes the request for the unnamed street and Shepherd to be monolithic. I think that's important because that's the, where the activity is going to happen. People are going to be coming and going all day long, stepping across landscaping. They should be on a safe sidewalk, not going through 10 feet of landscaping. And the other point that we have within our... And the other point that we have within our request is auto dealerships, and you can think back on the dealerships that you've gone to, they don't have landscaping on them. They have some decorative landscaping, they might have some stuff in front of the building, but the city's requirement is 15% landscaping. That is excessive for an auto dealership, and it wasn't required for the previous ones. They're primarily a parking lot with a building. And that's what we're requesting is 9% landscaping on this site, not 15. And we think we can make that requirement. And those are our key items that we want to touch on. There is one other element that the staff had brought up by saying no mixed use on this property. And we don't see any reason to withdraw the mixed use here. One of the ideas was that because there's going to be so much inventory on this site, it would be good to have watchmen and apartment of some kind above the car wash so they could view the whole property. And so we'd like to make sure that we can have the ability for mixed use on this site. And that was another one of the provisions in the document. I think I've hit most of my items. So those are the things that were in my letter. And I hope that you'll consider them favorably because I think that'll add to the success of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you very much, and I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners have questions for Ms. Moore? Mr. Seifer, anything?
I pass for right now.
Pass for what?
I'm thinking.
Ms. Moore, I have a, just a couple of quick questions. The displays you have here, this one and the previous two or three or four. Can you, have you been, do you have a calculation that establishes what additional time, i-time we're talking about? Because, I mean, if you're moving along 101, you're doing 65, which is slow and you're probably being honked at. You've got, if you're lucky, you've got additional seconds. My guess is you've got additional split seconds. I mean, it's, that area is, you are going by that thing and just not seeing an awful lot pretty quickly.
And you're absolutely right. I mean, you're on a freeway, you know, but this also applies to Bradley Road. When you're driving on Bradley Road, you want to be able to have clear line of sight to the dealerships and not street trees blocking it. But on the freeway, you know, think about your experience on 101, going past the Mercedes and the Jaguar and the BMW. That's all of three or four seconds, but it's made an impression. And that's what we're looking for here, is that line of sight.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is that the desolate wasteland you showed of that particular town in Arizona, I mean, it's a different animal. Because regardless of what you do here, this is a substantial, I mean, even if we put every single tree up we were talking about, this is a substantial improvement over where you are. So you're, it's, we're really talking about levels of success, not a potential failure. If we put up trees, you are still going to be in a better situation substantially than you were being on Bradley.
The conversations that we've had, and unfortunately Rick Cartel's not here, they're the consultant, but the several meetings I've been in, a dealership will make a decision to come to Santa Maria based on visibility. And if the visibility isn't there, they're not coming. So yes, some of these dealerships may move from other areas to be here because they've been in Santa Maria a long time. But if you want to get somebody new in here, you need to look at what is the current state of the art design for auto dealerships. And some of these requirements are not the state of the art.
Well, then wouldn't the best, the best chance of getting new dealerships, not shuffling them all the way down the street, but putting them north, but providing this additional prime space? Obviously, that space is being taken up by people who want that prime space. But ultimately, you're imposing your own restrictions by not giving them the prime space.
Well, the same challenges with the existing dealers. If they're not going, if they're just moving for the sake of the same product, just in a different location, why would they move?
Right. That's what I'm saying. They are benefiting tremendously by being on 101 regardless of whether there's trees or not. You've made my point, haven't you?
No, because they, they might not move because the trees are there now. So you, you know, you've got to look at what is happening throughout the region, and the region is saying, don't put trees in auto dealerships. Now, you can point to one out of 95 that have, that have trees. But almost all of the dealerships in California do not have canopy trees. And that's what they're competing with, that's what we're competing with, that's what Santa Maria is competing against.
Mr. Seifer.
Ms. Moore. You guys called me up, we had a meeting at your office, and we discussed this very issue. And I thought we were discussing replacing canopy trees with palm trees?
Correct.
I hear no trees.
We're fine with palm trees. But the city is indicating that they don't want palm trees in the parkway. We will have palm trees on the inside green.
Right. But what I'm talking about is along the street, I'm talking about the street trees. I'm talking about replacing the canopy trees with palm trees.
And we're fine with that.
And that is acceptable to you.
Yes.
And it's acceptable at the distances that the city has required, the 40 feet instead of the 20 feet.
Yes.
So you're looking to do more of a modern type of an affair. And frankly, it would delineate the auto dealership completely from all of the other retail. I mean, it is an auto dealership.
And it would mirror, it would mirror the auto dealerships that are in the other areas of Santa Maria.
The question with Costco and their trees, I have a hard time, we had an earlier incident with different landowners and different uses. This is their property and their trees and their project. Have you done any kind of a study or elevation-wise to show us what will work?
No, we haven't. But what we have done, because Costco doesn't own the property yet, have been working with Costco to look at the type of tree that could be in the parking lot as well as, as well as the perimeter trees, to lower the canopy and low, you know, still have a canopy tree, but lower. And that's what we're working with them to include in their plan.
So your vision is to take that triangle of the north of Costco, reduce the height of the trees, to take the canopy trees that are from, the lots are gone, from the very southernmost auto dealer, all the way down Broadway, Bradley, to the Ford dealer. And the conversation that we had, you, one of the owners mentioned to me that that section of Bradley, even though it has been designated that no trees, that because of the consistency of auto dealerships, they're probably going to plant some trees there anyway.
Oh, yes, yes. It was, there's always palm trees involved in this, various different species and different iterations as we come through our PD process. We will have plenty of palm trees.
Peter, you had something?
Just wanted to check in if the commission wanted any staff feedback.
Yeah. Did you have something?
I think it's more of a comment, but perhaps there's a question embedded and it would be for the applicant, but I may ask you. These diagrams, and I too met with the applicant and some of the project team, and there was, I think it's all the same information, there wasn't anything new. But what struck me, and what strikes me again here, is that there's a, there's a business model, there's a brand. I had been solely focused on the auto inventory. But the nuance and what I hadn't understood is because all of the auto dealers that maybe are not contiguous on these defined streets, but are in close proximity, have the palm trees. And so then, there's maybe, is it the applicant's position, using these diagrams in the field of vision here, that the palm trees are part of that brand in identifying a place to do one-stop shopping? Instead of thinking there's one or two, instead of seven or 15?
It is important, yes. It is important.
Well, that struck me, and that's what, here, and the other piece is that the heights of the building, I think, and I am interested in staff feedback, but, question, but what we're really dealing with is a surface level issue, which is the auto inventory, but we're dealing with that logo and brand at the top of the building. So it becomes very, very difficult to find a species or a plan that captures that brand. And then I went, okay, well, that blows the coincidence of most of the auto dealers having palm trees. So is that the point of this?
Yeah, I could, you should have, I should have said that in your sentence, yes.
Well, we're looking at a business model that we have an, we have a potential or a decision tree, if you will, where the canopy tree may be, the species may be, but I didn't hear anything that we're trying to lessen the overall percentage of landscaping. In fact, there were parts of it that I wonder if we're trying to increase the landscaping. But I think it's the actual elements that need to be, we need to look at the compatibility with the successful business model and best practices in that.
Correct.
Okay, so I don't know if there were questions. I'm happy for staff to make a comment on that. I had completely missed assigning a value to the entire brand. I was looking at the auto inventory.
Wasn't there a request to reduce it to 9% from 15, from the standard 15?
Yes, there's a request to reduce it to nine. And unlike any other area, part of the project area, we're allowing them to count the parkway on the inside of the sidewalk towards that number. So based on what the applicant said so far, that's roughly 4% or 5%. So that, they're basically asking to do 5% inside the sidewalk, plus or minus a percentage point.
Are you counting the trees in that? Because you did tell me that you're going to be planting trees on the inside, so is there counted in that 4 or 5, whatever number we're using?
Wherever the planter areas are in the project.
Peter, anything else?
Yes, yes. So I think the point made by Commissioner Pratt is right on. It's about which brand are we doing here? Is this an auto mall? Or is this part of a larger specific plan? If Costco's not there, and that whole area is auto mall, then yeah, no question, that's all auto mall. But from staff's perspective, the traffic that's going to come in and out of this area is going to be driven by Costco, just simply because Costco gets more people than an auto dealer will. If auto dealers got the volume of Costco, everyone would be happy.
Would that be great.
But you'd have to buy six cars at a time.
Yeah, you'd have to buy it in large amounts.
Which Pat would love. I mean, I'm sure that'd be good.
So wouldn't along that same line of thinking, that if we're going to have this draw, that these people are going to be coming from Costco, that when they come down that embankment and they come across this steel and they're getting ready to go into Costco and get some gas, that they have an absolute clear view and there's no question that to the left of them are auto sales?
If you believe that, that the canopy trees would cause a person to not know those are auto dealers, then, then, then the canopy tree shouldn't be there. Our view is that, when you, on the photo that had canopy trees, you knew it was still an auto dealer. The example out of Arizona are two sites very close to each other. Our competition isn't that close.
Our competition, Santa Barbara.
The map showed like stone's throw away, one auto dealer and then this other one. And who knows, there could be other ownership things that had involved in the issue. But this site is the main entrance, all the Costco, all the Costco customers are coming here, they have the freeway visibility, clearly in the park that, there's a segment that there's no argument that they have that clear visibility. And all of these are incorrect, we are not proposing any trees here because that's part of that prime view. It's when it starts to turn the corner, we don't think those, those views are real. The buildings are going to block views. The car wash on the corner, which is not an auto dealer, is going to block views. There are things that are going to block views. We note in the report that there are drawbacks to palms, but we say on the auto site, you can plant all the palms you want. The plan's just asking to be able to put canopy trees in the public right-of-way to create a consistent feel in the project area. Now, the two may have a conflict that can't be reconciled. The auto dealers believe it can't be reconciled. Admittedly, we don't know exactly what all the views in question are here. But if you're driving down the street and you see those autos and you see their monument signs, and you see their lighting and, and, and the labels on the windshield, everyone's going to know that it's auto. Plus, they are getting approval for, or the allowance for one of the freeway towers, like what's at crossroads or up at Gateway. People driving up and down the freeway are going to know there are auto dealers here. However, it comes down to which image is more important. And so if the image of the auto dealers being more concise is more important, then you should go with what the applicant's asking for. If the image of the consistent street scape in this whole specific plan area is more important, then we think that there needs to be some canopy trees on the other side of Bradley. And there's not going to be any type of, there's no easy answer.
No, there isn't.
I also do want to state that if, if the interest is in having a caretaker unit on the car wash, we can add that into the plan. The no mixed use element is not about Area 4, it's the whole plan area that we're specifically, you know, planning this area out. And the mixed use ordinance is really best intended for areas that, like earlier today, we had one, a mixed use application where, well, the downtown was, yeah, downtown allows mixed use automatically. But yes, we have mixed use elsewhere. So if there's interest in allowing a caretaker unit on the car wash, that's fine. What we're concerned with, and it goes back to the issue of the fiscal impact, is that the sites that are indicated as car dealers end up as car dealers.
Ms. Moore, are you, you guys satisfied with that? So you have your, your, your site over, your caretaker site, but it doesn't wash over all concerned?
That's a great start. We'd still prefer the mixed use designation on there, just deleting the provision across the site. Anyways, that's what we prefer. I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'm just going to go ahead and close and sit down.
Yeah, one last. Let's wrap this up.
First of all, thank you very much for your time on this project. We are very proud of this specific plan, and we're very proud of the work that has already been done with the city staff. We do have some philosophical issues that we brought before you today. We hope that that will not delay your action to approve the specific plan. And if there are some, some of these items that you think need to take a separate action in separate direction, we request that you do that. So we're very hopeful that you will approve the specific plan tonight. Thank you very much. And Peter, Annetta, Larry, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Okay, let's move on down to, I think we've talked over any questions. All right, then, any written communication? Does matter? No, I have three slips to speak, but two of them, one's from Lori Tormora and one's from Nick Tompkins. Are you good? You guys are good. Okay, there we are. Then we have one from Ken Huff. Mr. Huff?
Is he still here?
Is he still here? Is he awake?
By the way.
State your name and address, please.
I'm Ken Huff, 1553 Eagle Street, Santa Maria. And I'm speaking again for the Santa Barbara County Action Network. Peter, could I ask you to put up slide number eight, please? I have to agree that one of the, and we don't have to look at it yet, but I'll get to it. One of the really important things is, is One of the really important things is, is visibility of things. The beauty of our, of our valley, and Peter noted that one of the most notable geographic features, and well, the most notable in this site, is the escarpment, and it's one of the most notable features throughout our city. From 101 to Blosser Road, there are, or there have been opportunities to take advantage of the views that you can get from the top of the escarpment. Right now, if you're walking along or driving on Betaravia, you look to the north, and you see the mountains, and you look across the fields, and it's beautiful. Further out Betaravia, before you get to Blosser, the same thing happens, and hopefully there's an opportunity out there that's not lost yet to have a multi-use path along the escarpment above the new school that just opened. So to me, there's an opportunity here. It may be lost already, and maybe it's too late with all these designs, but if you look along the north side of that slide, there's a little bit of green, but there's no sidewalk in there, there's loading docks on the backside of these stores. So the people that are working on the loading docks, they're going to look over maybe a little wall or whatever, and they're going to have this gorgeous view. Wouldn't it have been nice to plan this where the public spaces around these stores to do with restaurants or whatnot, where you could take advantage of the gorgeous view and look out across the new park, and the mountains in the distance? So, you know, we've lost opportunities in other places, we may have lost it here, but maybe we haven't, and I'd urge you to consider whether there's, there's still a way to get a multi-use path so the public could take advantage of that. We're going to lose, along Betaravia, when those buildings are up, they're 40 or 50 feet tall, you're not going to have that view at all. I thought I started my timer, but I didn't. Do I have any time left?
Yeah, a little.
So anyway, thank you, thank you for that, I urge you to consider that. And then one last point, timing seems to be everything. I go to Costco, and I go to Home Depot, I go to Orchard Supply Hardware, I buy gas at three stations within a mile of this area, and none of these places are crowded, except one gas station that's the cheapest in town.
Thank you.
So I don't know how fast all this will go in, but I do worry if mostly we're moving auto dealers from one place down the hill to another place, what's going to happen with all that property, and what's going to happen with the Costco that, that's there now, and with the other gas stations that are, are in the area? So I don't know the answers to any of that, but I hope you'll consider that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huff. We've got one more, just under the wire, couldn't resist. Richard Pata, is that right? If you could state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Richard Patae from 3500 Halama Road. I am speaking in favor of the project, I think it's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that there's support for preserving the Enos House. I think it ought to be turned into an ag museum, kind of like the Stowe House down in Galita, portraying local agriculture here, also in the park. I think that that'd be a place for some antique farm equipment from the Santa Maria Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we are going to, that is the last public piece of comments, so we are going to bring it back to the commission. Comments, Mr. Seifert, why don't we start with you?
Peter, I can't do the math. You're telling me that that setback's not going to change on that property, on that residential, but if we have a five-foot sidewalk and 20-foot a setback behind the sidewalk, that's 25 feet. If you have a 10-foot easement, if you have the 10-foot, the 6-foot, and then the 20-foot, that's 36 feet.
It's 10, 6, 10, so it's 26 versus 25. So it is technically different, but we don't, we didn't view that as a major difference.
So you're only going to give them a foot of that property anyway? You're going to, they're going to gain one foot, if they did the monolithic.
Yeah. And if the, if the, if the concern is providing them the apartments with more flexibility to stick into the setback, that can be looked at at the PD stage. Our priority is the street scape, and so if, if there's a view that you can accept having the parkway, if we give a little more variation on their setback, we have no problem with that. It's something you'll see the detailed plan of when the PD permit comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments or questions, Mr. Seifert? No?
No, thank you.
Ms. Pratt?
Uh, well, I don't know that I have a lot, but I would say that, as far as Area 4, I, gosh, they're just, I'm so appreciative of staff going after the street scape, and I really believe that it's important, but on that particular area, it's not really a but, I think we need to be a little more flexible. So I haven't made it my mind by any stretch of the imagination, but I think we have a long way to go on those properties to get them to the successful place that the city is hoping for on that fiscal component. So I would, I mean, I'm looking for ways to keep the bulk of the consistency on the street scape, but to give the, the land use and the parcels in for the maximum flexibility, knowing that we'll also be looking at their planned permit. I just know there's just an awful lot of variables between now and then for them, because of everything we're looking at, I think they have the least pieces in place. And yet, this is a very significant decision in finding the recipe of balance. So that's my, that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Mr. Andrade?
You're asking, let me just inquire of Peter, you're asking that we approve this supplemental EIR initially, is that the first thing you're asking?
Yes, so, so if, when we get to the motions, the first motion should be, the motion should be in the order as shown on the report.
Right, it should be the environmental motions usually go first, correct?
Yes, yes.
And so you, the recommendation is the order in which you asked us to consider these items, that is, the list of five, right?
Well, I have the slide on the screen from earlier of the things that we would like to have, to have feedback on. These don't exactly match the order of the recommendations.
So that's why I'm inquiring about.
Yeah, if you want to go in order of the, of the report, then you would start with the, you'd start with number two, and then move into three and four together, and then, and then number one. Number one will be, probably, should be the one that will have the most input of each commissioner. But we would like input on, on, on all the pieces up there, as well as feedback on the main issues raised by the applicant, and that's, that's the frontage on battles. In fact, I'm just going to type that in. So, I mean, if you could start with the EIR.
This is my concern, is that the way this is drafted for recommendations, is we do it by formal motion, don't kind of jive with what we've been discussing, and where our concerns are, that we've expressed about different compromises, so, so, but, but I always thought the environmental motions went first, and that was, so that's, that's number one.
It's just that some of, you may make some, knowing about how some of these things do relate to the environmental review, and the issues with air quality and aesthetics and stuff, may guide some of your, some of your decisions on the specific plan, so that's the only reason why it was listed for deliberation in a different order. But I can move it up to the top.
I think it is at the top.
No, I mean, on a slide.
On the slide.
So you can all see it on the slide, as well as have it in the report. So I believe this has the pieces now, so one, two, and three are pretty, well, they're their own item. When you get into specific plan, we would like input on the vision development plan, which once again, that's the map with the red and the brown, which admittedly, there is no controversy at this hearing. Staff recommending it, the applicant supports it. Any of the guidelines and standards that you want to discuss that, that aren't already being brought up, there's street scape, street trees, the auto zoning issue that we raised earlier, and then a couple more that I need to put in, the landscaping percentage for auto, as well as the issue of mixed use. Have to add those.
While Peter's doing that, we recall that there's a recommendation for a change in one of the mitigation measures that hadn't been corrected earlier. I think it came out in the last, one of the last transmittals we gave you, so when someone makes a motion on the environmental document, if you could also include that, that change to the mitigation, I appreciate that.
Are there any questions at this time about the, about the EIR and the ready considerations?
What is it, the mitigation measure that was?
It was the one that related to the, the building construction being up to LEED standards. The only expectation of the city is that they provide us with a checklist that shows how their plan meets it, we're not asking for any type of certification, and an edit was overlooked on the, on the mitigation measure. And that was a document that was transmitted with the UPC comment letter.
Right. Were you going to make a motion?
You want to spell out the motion, and I'll, I'll make the environmental motion. It's a resolution.
Yes, so the, for the environmental, the resolution would be that the commission recommend the council adopt the supplemental environmental impact report for the Enos Ranches specific plan, with the amendment to the mitigation measure about LEED.
That would be my motion.
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call?
Can I have a question?
Sure.
So how does that affect the issues that we're talking about in these areas? If we, if we, if we pass this right now, does that mean there's no more negotiations? It is whatever it's spelled out in the?
Well, there are certain things in the EIR that talk about the importance of canopy trees in the project area to address environmental impacts.
So I don't think those issues have been resolved?
Yeah, if too many of the canopy trees are removed, an argument could be made that we're not doing enough on the mitigation level. However, I believe the applicant has said that for whatever area that they're talking about not planting, they are open to planting elsewhere, which I think arguably then is, that can be determined as addressing the environmental impact. I don't know that, other than that, other than the trees, any of the changes we're talking about would affect any of the EIR.
So the curves, the distances, the monolithic, the differences, that's not, we're not voting on that right now?
No, that's, those are details that are, can you go?
Can I just, let me ask one, one further question, Peter, and that is that with the makeup of the, of the commission right at the moment, if there is, what happens if there's a tie, what happens if there, I mean, obviously, if it's a yes or a no, then that's pretty straightforward, but if it's at a tie, does it still roll on up to the city council, or, or at that point, it has not been moved forward?
I'll answer that, to be sure, Dickerson. A tie would mean the motion did not pass. So it would not get to the council if there was no recommendation, one way or the other, if it was a tie.
I think we're thinking that if, if a motion fails, we would take that as the action.
That would be the action.
That's the recommendation is not to pass. If, if the motion on the specific plan fails, we would ask for specifics of why. We want to have that in the council report, but then it would be that the planning commission did not recommend.
Well, okay, the, the fact, the de facto action of that, or the result of that, would mean that you weren't, were not able to make a recommendation, one way or the other. So it would, staff could bring it forward to the city council, since they have the ultimate authority, but you would not make a recommendation.
So a tie is not a, so a tie is not a no? I, that's what I thought, and I thought that's what the?
Tie is a no. What Peter was saying is that staff would go ahead and still take it to the council, they're the ultimate deciders anyway, you're only, you're only making a recommendation tonight, so we wouldn't, the project wouldn't stall if you're unable to reach a decision, is what. I was answering your question.
Got it.
And I think Peter correctly explained that, that, that wouldn't stop the project from going forward. I was just merely saying that you wouldn't be making a recommendation, one way or the other, if you couldn't get three votes on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, just one other point. These are already actions that are legislative in nature, which are just a recommendation from the planning commission to city council. If this was your meeting on March 16th, and you still had your four people here, and you're starting to look at the plan developments, that is an action that would be a final action. It would be a denial because of the two, two, that would have to be appealed to the planning, to the city council. So different than what we're doing tonight, these are all legislative actions that we're asking for you to do, and so it's an automatic recommendation, whether it's a denial or an approval.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Hough. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, and we're looking for a, Kathleen?
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Co-Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
The, the next recommendation would be on the GPZ, in order to, the planning commission should comment on the topic of auto zoning, because if, depending on what you decide on for auto zoning, that could affect your recommendation of what the zone of Area 4 ends up looking like on the zoning map. It wouldn't affect the general plan land use map, but the two are in the same resolution.
Questions regarding that motion that was made?
Do you want us to comment on it?
Sure.
Right, we have, there were two options laid out.
Auto zone or no auto.
And my inclination is to go with getting the city council to take the item, as opposed to doing an auto overlay.
Okay. Mr. Seifert?
I agree with that, that's what I wrote down on my notes also.
Mr. Andrade?
All right, no, I, I have a, that would be my, that would be my motion to approve a resolution, recommend the city council approve the general plan, land use map, no, the zoning map amendment, right? Okay, that's my motion.
We have a second? I'll second it. Okay, can we get a, Kathleen?
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Co-Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
No.
Commissioner Seifert?
No.
For the purpose of reporting, is it fair to say that the rest of the general plan land use map amendment, and the rest of the proposed change to the zoning map, other than Area 4, well, not, is it fair to say, can you acknowledge whether or not you support everything outside of Area 4, just so that we can relay that information off? I mean, the, the motion failed, the item is not going to? we won't say the planning commission recommended approval of the zone change, but if we can say the only issue was this one spot, that would be helpful to the council.
Mr. Seifert?
Does this include the sidewalks, the mono versus the other sidewalks?
This is only the auto overlay.
Just the auto.
Or the auto zoning versus just saying the PD has to go to council.
Mr. Seifert?
No.
Your opinion on that would be no? For the rest of it as well?
Make it very clear for me one more time.
Okay, yeah, so the in this, in this part of the motion, we are talking about amending the general plan land use map and the zoning map. The zoning map would have a district for Area One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. Whichever approach we take or propose for the auto zoning versus just the permit going up to council, the general plan land use map is identical in either case. The zoning map would be different for Area Four. So the question is, other than the Area Four zoning, is the rest of the land use map amendment and the rest of the zoning map amendment, just the map change, other than Area Four acceptable?
I believe it is.
Yes, that, I agree.
It is for me as well.
Yeah, well, I voted for the motion.
There you go. So there's your answer.
So then the next would be the specific plan, and that is where a lot of issues are left on the table. No, it's one resolution. Yeah, yeah. So I'm deleting auto zoning from the list of things you have to talk about on the specific plan, because you already talked about that. So the specific plan, feedback on these areas, available for any questions if you need any reminders.
Are we on the sidewalks yet?
Huh? Sure. What would you like to talk about?
Is that what we're on?
The commission has talked about any item on.
Okay.
So potpourri.
And I've just got to say, I live on College. And I understand that you guys are trying to plant a lot of trees right next to the street, and that that's your vision. But I have to pull out from moonlight to College every day. And my kids do, my wife does too. It's a dangerous street. You cannot see cars coming at you. I don't agree with the fact that you're saying that our plan should be that you should have a curb and a space that we have trees planted right next to the street. That's not a vision that I see. I see it as a danger to our, to our community. I don't know how many accidents have been reported at that intersection, but there used to be quite a bit more than there are now. So I'm not, I'm not as firm on having this split. I like to pull up to the curb. I like to get out of my car and walk on the sidewalk. I like the landscaping beyond that. That, I don't agree with your vision on the interior of those sidewalks. I think it would be better for you to come down that street, park your car, get out on the sidewalk, take your kid to the school. So as far as those areas go, I think they need to be looked at again on this plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Pratt?
That's compelling. And so is the fact that I like the concept that the staff is in terms of when I get out of my car, or if I also live on College, if I decide to walk down, I would like the separation of the trees. And certainly, it does look better. But the practical side of me says, maybe I'm not ready to make up my mind.
That's the practical side?
That's the practical side of me. That acknowledges the issues that have been brought up.
Mr. Andrade?
I'm in favor of the trees, as staff has suggested. I don't have any problem with that. I think people, when you have trees, people are more careful. And so I think that's just part of the calming situation, given, given when you drive down that. And also, just the look, I think with the canopies is just much better. We have some wide streets in Santa Maria, along Church, I think, and on the older side, that have these huge canopy trees that create this really calming kind of effect. I don't see people rushing down unless they're headed to church. Maybe they're fast. But other than that, I think it's, I think it's appropriate. So I would, I would support the staff's position on the trees.
I'm not against trees, and I'm not against canopies. I'm against trees right next to the street. That's my concern.
Right, no, and I'm in favor of those.
I like canopies, I like trees. I'm not against trees.
Okay, that's okay.
I also, I prefer staff's recommendation on the, on the trees and the canopies. You know, I think that as we've, as we've had meetings over the last half year or so, and staff has presented various projects and tried to increase the amount of vegetation, increase the amount of trees. I think that it just is, it is the right direction for Santa Maria. And that ultimately, if we want our city to be a more beautiful place, a more calming place, a more green place to live, we have to start making the decisions and vote that way. When we, when we vote against things like that, or we, or we get a project in, and everybody has a reason why they don't want to do it. You know, every single project is, gosh, you know, but we are special. Well, but at some point, you just want people to say, gosh, I sure would like to make this city better. And sometimes, that's how you do it. And we had a joint mission, a joint meeting a little bit ago with the city council, and everybody at that time said, yes, we, we all want to improve our, our community by adding more trees. And that's what staff is trying to do, and I'm not going to undermine them, their attempt to do that. I think that's a good idea.
Could I ask staff a question?
You may.
So the photos that were shown, and I can see other places where this has been done, and there's litter in the depression where the tree is, in the, in the cutout. You said that past that, the point of that picture, we can't have grass there anymore, right? So do you, is there, is there gonna be enough resource, human, through the wrecking parks department, to ensure that what we all hope to get can in fact be maintained to that level?
Yes, and just so that, just want to make sure, we're talking about the parkways and trees being, being between the sidewalk and the street, as opposed to monolithic with it on the other? And on that topic, we work very closely with both public works and recreation parks. And the approach we came up with works. Now, it is going to, like all other parts of the city that go through new development, the properties are going to have to pay into a maintenance district. City staff actually won't, chances are wrecking park staff actually won't be doing the actual work. They'll be contracting and just overseeing it. And that's how it's done on many of our streets. And so that is, that is part of the plan.
Okay. Well, I like the plan that works, so.
Okay. What's the next thing on the list?
And one more thing, sorry, just not to let it go, if that's okay. So on the practical side, I think we've had other places in the city where we did have to backtrack because of traffic issues that were not anticipated. And I assume that if Commissioner Seifert's thoughts on the safety came to be, we would take corrective action.
Yes, and where the, where the trees get planted, you know, it's gonna have a certain spacing that we're doing the maximum spacing, particularly in the area where people have the concern about, about the trees. And there's gonna be gaps at the driveways. You're not gonna have a driveway and then a tree on either side of it. And at the corners, you're gonna have a sight distance triangle. And we are purposely looking at trees that are going to, canopy needs to get up and out of the way and not have too big of a trunk to not have too much of a view with that. If there are cases where there are issues, we, you know, well, through the design, we're gonna try to make sure trees aren't planted in a spot that would be a problem.
So would this be the appropriate time to discuss the trees along Battles?
Peter? That's up to the commission. I, I'm gonna note that it looks like it's three to one on the parkways to streetscape. This is the parkways for Area, for Shepherd and those smaller streets.
Right, right.
So you can move on to any of the others, and Battles is.
Battles is one.
Is one of them.
Yeah.
Personally, I like the idea of delineating the auto dealers with the palm trees and getting them their own separate space. I think it's the right thing to do for a retailer. I think it's, I think it's appropriate with the Costco and the retails that we have up on Betavia. They've met and exceeded any kind of landscape that we have in this town. Giving these guys a clear and free rein to sell their automobiles without droppings, without leaves, without birds. I don't have an issue with that, and I believe that's the right way to do that.
No, I thought we were talking about Battles.
I, isn't that Battles?
That's Bradley.
Bradley? I'm talking about Bradley.
I think we should move on to Bradley now.
There's no name on it. You didn't put a name on it. You got, you got me up here sweating, and I don't even know the name of the street.
And we're all sweating.
So portion of Bradley on the auto dealer's side?
Yes, I believe that should be the auto dealers. I should be, I believe that should be delineated as auto dealers. And I think we should get the highest possible auto dealership that we can get. And judging from what the, the industry standards are right now, that would be the clean lot with the palm trees. And I don't see it as a detriment. We're selling cars. I mean, that's, that's what we're doing there. That is a car lot. So that's my opinion of that, that area right there.
For clarification, would that be all the way to the far north or the far south end?
It is now, yes.
Auto dealerships?
Yes, it is.
And on the west side of the road?
The Costco side stays the side, that's, yeah. I don't have any problem with the landscaping at Costco, what they're doing. But the car dealers have, have come to us, they said, this is what we need for our business. We want them to sell as many cars as they can. We want to be as business friendly to them as we can. This is the plan that they need, and they've shown us examples that work. And I don't have a problem with that. I don't, I don't think it's ugly, I don't think it's, we're selling cars. So why hide it?
Commissioner Pratt?
We're going in order, I see. I'll be prepared. Okay, so for some of the same reasons, but a few others, I am also inclined, as I said earlier, to give maximum flexibility to the auto dealers at this point. Based on the images I've seen and the information we've received, I think, and I would hope, that we'll look for the opportunities to incorporate some, if there are specific sites within, that we could take another look at that, and I would certainly encourage that. But I'm, it's been my experience that best practices avoid problems. And I think there's, it's not coincidence, now that I've looked at it, that most of the auto dealers have a tree species that is not a canopy tree. And, and I just don't think the species we've been given to look at in terms of the canopy tree is compatible with a successful business model for this, so. So I would, I might have some latitude in where that delineation is made. But for now, I'll just say all the way up.
Well, clarifying, all the way up?
Through the auto lots.
Okay, thank you.
And once again, the west side, but not the Costco side, is that correct?
Yes.
And so just for clarification, showing the image, of course, yellow does not show up that well. Our read of what Commissioner Seifert and Pratt had said is that the area shown in yellow should cancel out what otherwise would have been green?
Yes, I'm there, but then I have to ask. I mean, we are gonna get the opportunity to see a picture of what it would look like on one side of the street to potentially have palm trees, and the other side to have canopy trees? Is that where we are with the, what you've just drawn in?
The, the, if no canopy trees are put on the west side of Bradley, then there would be a ten-foot planter with no tree in it, sidewalk, and then the palms could occur outside of the right away.
I'm not saying I don't want trees along the street. I'm saying I don't mind them being palm trees.
It's just that our, our wrecking parks department is, their strong preference is that if palms are, palms not be in the parkway, and they have a variety of reasons, then we're trying to respect that. So the applicant has said they don't mind not having any trees there. It would just, the palms would be out to the sidewalk.
Are you understanding that, or do you?
Oh, no, I understand.
Okay.
I mean, if the commission wants to request that, we look at putting them in the, in the parkway. That's fine, I just want to let you know that at the council level, staff's gonna be saying if they're not canopy trees.
I would request that you look at putting them in the parkway.
I think we need to look at it.
Commissioner Andrade?
I'm, I thought we had already talked about the Area Four street trees, and so can you put your list back up?
Thought that's what we were talking about. I asked before I asked the question. I thought that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, so the prior discussion was on specifically the monolithic versus the separated, not on Bradley, but on the side streets. And so now we're on the Area Four street trees on the Bradley side. H. So just let me know if you want me to stay here or go back to the map.
Why don't you explain your position on the Area Four street trees? I thought we'd already went through this.
On the Area Four street trees, our view, no, no pun intended, is that the area shown in red is really where they're going to get the strong view. And thus, we would prefer having the canopy street trees on the other side. That does conflict with, if you believe that having the street tree up by the street, and then having palms interior cause a.
Earlier, you showed us a red line where there were not going to be any trees.
Yeah.
Which was the northern, kind of, I guess, the northern part of that.
Yes, it's between, it's where the red arrows are.
So there would not be any trees, correct?
Unless, no required trees, the applicant has said that they might choose to put some in. But we wouldn't require them.
But that, so that was acceptable to me, because that's right off the freeway, that's the view they're gonna be able to see. But I think we ought to have, right, that red line. And I think it's fine up to that point. No trees that we would require on that northeastern part of the project. Street trees on the other side, that's my view.
You know, I, I guess where I'm kind of following in this thing is, you know, one, I really dislike palm trees, but that's my own personal view. But, but I think probably palm trees, I get the sense they're only grudgingly put in because they are the least obnoxious to car dealerships. If they're, they have to put a tree in, they're gonna put one that looks like a pole. So I, from that standpoint, I think that, once again, I kind of fall into the category of wanting to try to beautify this city. I don't think that that split second is, is going to make a substantive difference in the viewing nature of things. And I think part of it comes from that what wasn't shown in Ms. Tamora's pictures were that you also extend the view of car dealerships across the street to the Ford dealership as well. And nobody's talked about the fact, I mean, it just cuts off there as in, that's the only view we have? Well, no, there is a whole nother dealership that adds to that aesthetic of, these are car dealerships, and this is where all the dealerships are. So when you kind of add that, it kind of, it kind of offsets the lack of view down here. So, at least for this commissioner. So I would, I would rather approve what the, what staff has, has worked on and compromised with, with the applicant's over.
And with regard to the mixed, mixed use, I think I'm in agreement to allow them to have a. a caretaker place above wherever they think it's appropriate. So I think that's a reasonable request. I don't, I agree that we should not have mixed uses. Those should be car dealers. That's what we are looking at, that's what we're relying on, and they should not be mixed use where it become partial residential or anything like that. So I would agree that we strike the mixed use, but allow flexibility for them to build their caretaker units wherever they want to put them, in that car dealer area.
I would agree with that statement.
I would too.
So help me out here, because my current thought is that if, originally, my inclination to let the city council decide whether or not, what uses, doesn't that also give them the purview to decide if mixed use is appropriate?
Yes, it could. If the section stays in that council is the final approval of all the PD permits, then any proposal would go to council.
Okay, so I'm going to stick with being consistent, because I think those two things are tied together, and I think the city council will have the information to make a good decision.
So you're going to be abstaining, is that more?
If we're voting on that, I would vote no. Because I think it's duplicative for letting the city council decide what's-
But our position is they want to know our recommendation, so you can-
Okay.
That's, so that's, they can change their mind and say, "Oh, you guys are all crazy if we don't make, we don't agree with that." They can do their own thing, so.
So in that instance, abstaining.
Just, I think if I could, trying to get this down correctly, for mixed use, three are in support of adding language that says you can have a caretaker unit, one is for just full mixed use.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed, sitting here today, to having a caretaker on the side.
I think that's what they asked.
Okay, I apologize.
But, but, I just want to clarify, you're in favor of any mixed use, because council's going to be seeing it. The other three commissioners, I believe, said you're in favor of letting them do a caretaker unit, but maybe not anything else.
I believe I agreed with Dale when that-
I would say it differently than what you just said, although it's the same idea. I would say that I am not opposed to the specific mixed use we discussed here tonight, but, and in conjunction with that, I am not in favor of removing the mixed use. I am in favor of the city council deciding.
Excuse me, Peter, perhaps you could explain a little bit more about what the mixed use that's being requested is. We're talking about the ordinance, mixed use ordinance, not the uses on this site. Would you, I think that would help clear up some confusion.
Right now, there, well, there is a section in the ordinance that allows a wide variety of mixed uses with a lot of criteria, and it's fairly complicated. But you could essentially do a commercial use on a residential property. You could sometimes do a residential use on a commercial, commercial property. You could sometimes do commercial on industrial and vice versa and such. It's a case-by-case basis. Right now, the plan says there is no mixed use allowed, that the areas are what, the retailer area needs to be retail and not have housing added or industrial, and that the housing area needs to be housing and not have another use. What I, there are two, my read is there are two commissioners, Commissioner Pratt and Seifert, that would recommend deleting the prohibition of mixed use that is currently in the draft, which would allow it. There are two commissioners that would only want to see a caretaker unit as the only type of mixed use in Area Four, but not allow any other type of mixed use.
I think that's a fair representation.
Yes.
Okay. How about the Battles frontage? This is one where we concur with the language that the developers team asked for with the caveat that if we can't get the landscaping for some reason, we're going to expect the PD permit to have some extra landscaping on their properties.
Yes.
Yes, that's acceptable.
Yes.
All right, mission accomplished. Can I, everyone?
Let's see. Parking, area four landscaping, so the landscaping percentage for the auto lots. Standard ordinance is 15%. We are allowing them to count the parkway, which they claim roughly is about 4%, so they're effectively at 11 now. But they want their total number to be nine, which, when you account for the parkway, is effectively five. Should we allow a greater reduction in their landscape area? With the caveat that Area Four allows the commission to vary from these standards if they can convince you at the PD permit stage.
Say that again. Exactly as you did just then.
Is there a specific part?
Just the last part. Maybe you lost me on the last part.
Okay, so just like in Area One, there's language that says alternatives to the standards can be approved by the commission at the PD permit stage. So an auto dealer can come in, the rule could stay 15%. The auto dealer can come in and maybe they get, it's 10% only, but they show you it's a really nice landscaping, and you're like, because you made that so nice, it's worth the flexibility. Whereas maybe somebody comes in and the landscaping isn't, doesn't look that good, and you don't want to give that type of flexibility. The plan already allows it, or you can just lower the number. And just note, the number is a minimum, so the commission can always ask for more.
My view would be that we just keep it at 15% with the notion that if the plan comes in at PD permit and it looks good, then we can have the flexibility to reduce it. That at this point, keep it at 15%, which is the standard city requirement.
Commissioner Pratt?
My view is to keep it consistent with the language that is drafted, that the staff recommends, with this caveat. I think we're back to the same place as you when we made the consensus on the easement piece and what that would mean if we were able to get it landscaped. I would, and then please don't keep bringing it up as it's in the general plan. I would say the same thing on this particular issue, that we should have latitude as the language says when it comes to us.
It's a car lot. I, 15% seems a little excessive to me. We've done plenty of projects in town, and these guys are selling cars again, and it's basically a big asphalt parking lot. I'm not exactly sure where you would put 15% of. I would say that you could keep your 15% in the retail areas, but the car lots, it's not important to me to keep that number. I'd say the 9% would be sufficient on the lots themselves. You've got the car, you've got the retail areas and the car wash. You could keep that consistent with the city, the city's 15%. But for, as far as for the auto mall itself, I really don't see an issue with 9%.
For the retail areas, I think the 15% is the right way to go. I agree to some extent with Commissioner Seifert on it. I, what I, for the lot itself, but with a caveat, I don't think that they would necessarily need as much as a normal retailer would if there was an agreement to have canopy trees along the thing, because then you're really differentiating their space from everything else. You're giving it that look of the trees, and everyone is kind of going, "Okay, we have a very nice driveway here." But once you get onto the, into the actual selling area, then you have a much smaller percentage. So for me, I would like to see that. But if they, if for some reason the canopy trees go by the wayside, then I think you need to break up all that space with a lot of vegetation, and I'd be back up at the 15 level.
Parking lot trees, the six linear versus, six without linear versus three in a row.
Subject to our-
Yes.
Considering alternative, whatever.
At the PD permit stage, yes.
Vegetation is eaten, vegetables is eaten.
Vegetables, that's right.
Landscaping.
And then also to note that the number that was mentioned for the one project, you know, 13 trees coming up, staff would have no problem with that.
That's what my view.
And I think if I followed that conversation, 13 on one side and it was more on the other.
It's likely going to be more on the other.
Okay.
The other has a larger parking lot area, therefore, there were more trees, therefore, if they want to take a certain percentage out, it could be more.
Seifert?
I feel that what they're asking for is reasonable. I don't have any problem with extending that out.
And I agree as well. I think that that, cutting back a few of the trees that way is probably reasonable and in line with things. And by the way, I also want to clarify one thing from, that I thought about, about the past topic, and that was the percentage on the lot and the canopy versus not. I would not, if, if, once again, we lost the canopies and instead there was a whole line of palm trees, I would not give, personally, I wouldn't give a percentage for that, for those type of trees. I wouldn't cut them slack for that 4%. I just don't think those really do the job. What do we got left?
Okay, so seeing the time.
Now, just now you see the time?
What is the time?
It was just a lead-in. So just going through D through I. On the Battles frontage, there's full agreement to go with the UPC request. On the Parkway streetscape, this being those, the smaller streets, it's a 3-1 in favor of the parkway with Seifert wanting the monolithic. For the parking lot trees, it's 4-0, given the fact that PD, 4-0 to keep the staff, keep the specific plan as is, given the fact that there's flex in the PD available.
Yes.
Mixed use, two commissioners only would consider allowing a caretaker unit as a mixed use option. Two would be in favor of the full mixed use because the council ends up seeing the-
Yeah, that's an important caveat.
Yeah. And then on adding, Area Four street trees, split 2-2, Commissioner Pratt, Seifert for no canopy trees all along the auto dealership on Bradley, but no change to the other side. And then Area Four landscape percentage, 3-1 to keep it at 15, once again with the acknowledgement of the PD flex, Commissioner Seifert accepts nine.
And that sounds good?
Now, the method, may I ask city attorney, the method of getting that information, since there's no agreement on everything, would that be a motion to approve the specific plan and maybe tie again, and then that goes up with our separate recommendations to city council, or is that? Because some are three to one, some are two, two.
I was wondering that. We, to get, to really do a resolution, we'd have to change the language. No, no, no. I understand we're not going to do that. I'm just saying, Peter has a suggestion. I'll go ahead and-
What we ask is that, you know, given that you, you all have a sense of where each commissioner is on these topics, what is your recommendation for the whole plan?
I want to see it move forward. With the timeframe that it's, that they've been given.
So like if, if you are commissioner who was opposed to one thing, does that one thing make you want to vote no on the whole thing? Or do you see it still as overall acceptable? So-
So I'm on record as making my recommendations to the city council. So they're going to hear what I had to say, and they're going to have my input, so that would not keep me from voting to put this through.
Okay. And that's, the caveat I want to make is that I think the intent is that if a commissioner votes yes on the motion that includes all of these pieces, we are going to characterize that as, given all the compromises here, the overall was viewed as okay.
And I think the applicant asked that we approve the-
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Approve the specific plan.
To assist with the motion that the planning commission by resolution recommend council approve the amended Inos Rancho specific plan, SBZ 2015-0001, based on those straw votes and the changes that were agreed to between UPC and staff that came with the UPC letter after the staff report.
Yes, that would be my motion.
Do I hear a second? There we go. Kathleen?
Is there a second?
We do.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Co-Chair Dickerson?
Absolutely, co-chair. Thank you very much.
The last item for this major project is a motion to continue the tract map, the PD permits, 2015-21-23-24-26, and the development agreement to the regular planning commission meeting on March 16th, 2016.
So the development agreement would also be continued?
Yes.
Number four?
Okay. Yeah. Because at this point, it's still in the works and you haven't seen a draft yet.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that would be a motion?
To March, I'm sorry.
This is just a motion, yes.
He just read out.
To which date?
March 16th.
Okay, because this one says March 23rd.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No, no, I think-
Opposed?
It should be March 16th.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. That's it? That's it for that?
Wow.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much for your deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you for helping us. Okay, so-
Someone check to see if Maribel is still around, or she walked off. She should go home. I would hope, I would hope she has.
Okay, so we're just going to-
I know, I have, and that's one. She's not here? All right. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we got, we got two more items. Report on city council actions. Any reports?
Yeah. It was, it was pretty simple. It was the second reading of the lazy days.
Folks, folks, can we, folks, can we take the conversation outside, please?
They're happy, they're happy.
I am sure.
We're still getting-
I just keep going.
Hold on just one second. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Ofton.
Two items at the city council. First one was the second reading of lazy days development agreement ordinance that was approved on consent calendar. Second thing was a report from the Director of Administrative Services on the second quarter financial report and showed that things were up in each of the different segments that he normally talks about. So it was, it was a good meeting. And then a couple resolutions for retirees, one from public works, one from special projects, and so it was a good evening.
That was great.
Yeah.
That was great.
Any questions about the theater?
What's going on with the theater?
It's been out hurting for about two years now.
It was nice.
Doing quite well.
It's doing quite well?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, how about all the reports from planning commissioners and staff?
What about the overall mall? How is that doing? The mall, the overall?
The mall's for sale.
Would you like to buy it?
Are you serious? It's for sale?
It's been for sale.
Is that it for all reports?
No. So the confusion on the March 16th versus March 23rd is because for Inos Rancho, we may not have all the pieces we continue to March 16th ready on March 16th. We're still working with the applicant and getting plans back and forth. Want to ask, are the commissioners available to have a special meeting on March 23rd if something isn't ready on? It's the same day, it's a Wednesday, it's just an off week.
You didn't even look.
I know.
I don't know, I don't know at this time for myself. So I'll send an email out.
Yes, I'm available.
Because that's, if we can't get anything done, the idea is that we would continue the ones we can't get done to March 23rd.
I'm available.
Okay.
So far.
So if we can get a-
So it seems good.
Yeah. And then- No, they're the ones coming back. And then just FYI, there's no planning commission meeting on March 6th, 6th, March 2nd, March 2nd, not reading right. There's no, there's no study set- There's no, there's no study session tomorrow because of a training, most of staff's in training. There's no hearing on March 2nd. Two of the planning commissioners are going to be at a training, but we are going to have a study session on March 3rd. None of the items are controversial.
Says you.
Says me.
Exactly.
But you will see, some of those items would then be on the March 16th agenda. So some of you will be able to have the study session and get background. Those who cannot, if there's any questions, just call me, we can meet or talk on the phone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Go home, have a life. You've got two minutes.